And welcome to the Cedar Falls Regular City Council Meeting this April 2, 2018. I'll now call this meeting to order. A quick note, there was indeed no committee of the whole meeting this evening for folks who are looking for that. With that, I'll ask for a roll call from Madam Clerk, please.
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Blanford?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Wieland?
Here.
Green?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Item C is a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, March 19.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Take a couple of minutes here to read a proclamation for the Days of Remembrance. It does read in part, "Whereas the Holocaust was the state's sponsor of systematic persecution, annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, Jews were the primary victims, some 6 million in total. Many suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments, and whereas we, the people, the city of Cedar Falls, should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And whereas we should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom and a just society. And whereas the Days of Remembrance have been set aside for the people of Cedar Falls to remember the victims of the Holocaust as well as to reflect on the need for respect of all peoples. And whereas pursuant to an act of Congress in 1980, United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the Days of Remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust to be Sunday, April 18 through April 15, including the Day of Remembrance, April 12. Now therefore, I, Jim Brown, Mayor of the city of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim the week of Sunday, April 8 through April 15, as Days of Remembrance in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of the survivors as well as the rescuers and liberators, and further proclaim that we should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. Signed, the 2nd day of April, 2018." Please, Stephen Gaze, you're here to say a couple of words, sir? Appreciate it.
Mayor Brown, members of the council, officials and fellow citizens, I want to thank the city of Cedar Falls for issuing this proclamation as hundreds of cities and state governments throughout the country and around the world are doing this month. This year will celebrate our 12th annual Holocaust Remembrance Ceremony in the Cedar Valley. You may see posters like this around the community, and you're all cordially invited. And I'm inviting you on behalf of many faith-based civic and educational organizations that are sponsoring these events to come to the Hearst Center for the Arts on Wednesday evening at 6 o'clock for a short ceremony commemorating the victims of the Holocaust, and then a concert at 7 o'clock to commemorate the 75th anniversary of an important and symbolic event in the history of the Holocaust, the Warsaw Ghetto uprising. Mayor Brown will be offering remarks on behalf of the city of Cedar Falls, and you're all cordially invited. So thank you very much for your support of these Days of Remembrance.
Thank you, appreciate it. Moving on to item G, are there any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor. However, I did want to mention that I have received some communications after putting the council packet together, and I've placed those in front of council members and in the back of the book.
Very good, thank you. Item E is a special order of business. He wants a public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 29 of the Code of Ordinances relative to removal of familial terminology to be in conformance with the Code of Iowa. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before opening up for all comments, I believe Iris is here to say a few moments or a few things about this.
Yes, thank you. So to give you some quick background, back in April 2017, the legislature passed House File 134, which basically stated that no city or municipality can dictate or say what rental occupancy can be based on familial or family status. So in response to that, in December of 2017, the city passed an amendment to our rental code, which was basically terminology-based. So what you have in front of you today is basically in response to that for consistency and update to the zoning code, again, just terminology-based. So things like single-family home or single-family residence is now single-unit residence. So again, basically terminology-based for consistency.
Thank you, Iris. I will open up to the public for any public comments in this public hearing. Hearing and seeing none, declare the hearing closed. Item 2 is passed an ordinance amending Chapter 29 of the Code of Ordinances relative to removal of terminology to be in conformance with the Code of Iowa upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council?
One question.
Cruz?
I noticed in the College Hill overlay, they deleted rooming house and boarding house, but then they leave it in the rest of the code, so I was just kind of curious why that is that way.
So it's still, it's still part of the entire code, but to clean it up rather than have duplication throughout the code, we just kind of basically moved it to the front, so it applies everywhere, so for consistency again.
Okay.
Further comments by council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Item 3 is a public hearing, the proposed sale and conveyance of Lot 5 West Viking Road Industrial Park Phase 2, and to consider entering into proposed real estate purchase agreement. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before all comments publicly, David Sturch, I think from staff, has some comments.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This item is for the sale of a property in the West Viking Road Phase 2 addition. The property is at the north corner of Venture Way and Development Drive. There are no incentives placed on this request. We are going to sell this property for Skogman or Midwest Development is going to build a new 11,000 square foot facility for the future home of the Cedar Valley Gymnastics Corporation. So the kind of mirrored development for the property they built a couple of years ago for Kilo Fitness, it's the same property owner, so basically we're going to sell this property to Midwest Development for that new development, for the new building out there.
Thank you, sir. Any other further public comment? Hearing and seeing none, declare this hearing closed. Item 4 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a real estate purchase agreement and approving the authorizing execution of a quick claim deed conveying title to said real estate. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
Voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item F, old business. F1 is pass ordinance 2918 amending Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances relative to butchering and disposal of dead animals upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item F2 is pass ordinance 2920 vacating a portion of Dallas Drive right-of-way upon its second consideration. Just a quick note to council, we do indeed need a motion for this roll call vote because this is the normal second consideration that we're having on this particular ordinance. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 2A is to have a motion to suspend the rules requiring ordinances to be considered at three separate meetings. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? I will make quick notes, suspension of rules are rare for the, you folks at the council as a body. Usually it's the start of the construction season, right now, to take advantage of the weather and remove any sort of delays, and that's the main reason the applicant requests the suspension and also a recommendation from staff. Motion second, requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Indeed, finishing it off with item B, is there a motion to pass the ordinance upon its third and final consideration?
So moved.
Motion second, requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an agreement for the vacation of Dallas Drive public right-of-way. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, requires a roll call.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 4 is pass ordinance 2921 amending Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the adoption by reference of the 2017 addition of the National Electrical Code upon its second consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 5 is remove from the table the motion by Wieland and second by Green to reconsider action taken relative to a highway corridor and greenbelt overlay zoning district site plan for construction of a convenience store, gas station, and detached car wash on lots 33 and 34 of Pinnacle Prairie Business Center North. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item 5I is indeed the original resolution. It does read, "Resolution approving a highway corridor of greenbelt overlay zoning district site plan for construction of a Quickstar and the car wash in Pinnacle Prairie Business North." Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second, I think I'll open up, I think staff has a few things to say in relation to the resolutions, ain't you, Dan?
Yeah, I got a few slides to go through. We could put it up on the board just for the council and the public hearing TV, but just kind of go over some zoning history of this property. The Oster Development, approximately 600 acres, was rezoned from A1 Agriculture to MU back in 2004. And at that time, as a zoning change or ordinance change, we do a notice, and that's a mandatory notice, to property owners within 300 feet around that entire zoning district. And that was, that happened back in 2004. The MU does allow commercial uses. A gas station is a permitted use based on that zoning district, and there's a list of permitted uses in that section. Courtesy notices, we do courtesy notice for site plans as they come through planning and zoning and city council, and we did this for the Quickstar and Fairway back in September and December and January, and we did that for council too. So we did those notices back then. And then 2014, the developer requested some changes to the master plan, and that, that pretty much was the whole area, including this corner up by Green Hill and Main. So that was done in 2014, went through Planning and Zoning Commission and council. At that time, we did not send notices, they were not required, just for a master plan change. So the zoning didn't change, and it just remained in place since 2004. Again, this use is a permitted in MU district. As part of those criteria that we look at is those site plans and they include building location, parking lot locations, which are the setbacks for the district, of course, site plan, landscaping plan. We look at pedestrian plan and traffic plan, and we get into building design review with roof shape and materials and pattern. And within this district, it kind of starts with the developer or Oster Development and Locker Development, they're kind of the company that's working for this, for the property owner, and they, they look at the design of these buildings, they, they okay it, we get it through Planning and Zoning Commission as part of that site plan. Another, another elements, signage plans, detention plans for stormwater, and utility plans. So those have all been reviewed, checked off as part of the district requirements. When we were looking through this during the P&amp;Z discussion, there's been kind of some changes through the past few months, and initially, the car wash was attached to the building. It was, the exit was facing north, staff had some concerns about some blower noise that came from the property owners around there, so Quickstar looked at some changes to that. They basically added a detached car wash, so they separated from the building, rotated it, and had the exit to the south side. Some more changes were some, a pretty good screen or a solid screen of conifers on the north side, and those are going to be planted at eight foot tall as they are installed right-of-way. The canopy signage was changed just to add signage just on the east and west, so signage on the north will be eliminated, which faces those, which faces Green Hill Road. I'm going to get into some site plans as we move along here. Another, basically, agreement from Quickstar was they wanted, it was an idea of having some dimmable lighting or dimmable signage on the canopy, and Quickstar is agreeable to that. We can have that changed a little bit for the lights on the canopy. And then, along with the grading of their site, they're going to construct some grading for a future right turn lane there on Green Hill Road and the relocated recreational trail. So those are elements that Quickstar's agreed to add to their site plan. Just moving along with, oh, kind of, here we go. Site plan elements for that property, got the store in the middle of the site, car wash on the west side, the dumpsters kind of tucked in back in the corner. We got some sidewalk connections along both Coneflower and Blue Bell, and that does add connection into the building. The fuel canopy is on the west-east side of the building, which is right off of Coneflower. Some additional bike racks and picnic areas are on the north side. The sign is up on the northeast corner of the site, and that's more of a monument sign, I believe, eight foot tall, 36 square feet, and that meets those district requirements. The landscaping is, again, part of that site plan review. There's a number of trees along the public right-aways and then throughout the site. As you can see on that north side, there's a pretty good solid mixture of conifers, those are just evergreens and arborvitus on there. Again, those will be installed at eight foot height. Again, they meet all the requirements for the street trees, parking lot trees, site points for that district. Moving along, the building and the car wash and the canopy is kind of the same design. This is, this is the design that carried around all sides of the building with, with a asphalt hip roof, and then kind of a stone, stone wainscot around the bottom of the building, topped with some brick and some windows along the front, and I believe some on the, on the north side as well. Gasoline canopy is kind of a different design, instead of just a standard flat roof, they kind of pulled that design out of the building and made a man-stirred roof over that, and they carried, carried the columns or stone and brick columns around each of the posts that support the canopy. This is a stormwater management plan, and as part of that, we take a look at their plan for stormwater, make sure they control the, control the onsite runoff from impervious areas of the parking lot and the rooftops, controls it, it releases it into the detention basin that they'll construct on the north side of the site, and then from there, it'll release into the area of wide detention basin on the other side of Coneflower Parkway. So again, their submitted plan meets all our requirements with the city's, city of Cedar Falls. Moving along with some noise readings that Quickstar did on another site with a car wash operation, I think it was a new site in Wisconsin, they, they showed some measured readings at 50-foot intervals from the front of the garage or the car wash, and then the farthest reading is on the north side of Green Hill Road, just shy of the recreational trail. That's approximately 300 feet away, and the reading with the doors open, again, the exit or the, and the blowers are on the south side, so the reading there is less than the requirements for our city code, which is outlined below there, of 55 decibels. Moving along with site planning, light design, they're going to have some LED fixtures around the site. There's one pole that has a camera on it. There are also some additional cameras in and around the building, but there's just a one-pole camera out there. And then there's some recessed canopy lights. So that design on the right side of the plan kind of shows the bleed area, so to speak, of the lights, they're going to be down-facing lights that just expand just beyond the existing pavement of the proposed site there. Again, this is, this is another item on the agenda, but as, if this site plan is approved, we have to vacate a utility easement because the sale of the property is basically one and a half lots for this. As you remember, Fairway bought the west half of that, which is the corner lot plus roughly half of the middle lot, so we have to vacate the existing easements on the current line and move those over to the new line in the middle of the development. Along with this is another, again, another item on the agenda is a development agreement with Oster Development, and that is for the creation of a new left turn lane off of Green Hill Road onto Coneflower Parkway. So there is, there's some room to add that turn lane and then relocate the trail behind the turn lane. So as you can see on the drawing, the new turn lane will go in with a trail kind of in between the detention there on the north side and the new right turn lane. And then this also includes some painted left turn lanes on Green Hill Road. So basically, we're looking at some current or near-term improvements, and then we're looking at, we sent an RFP out to study the whole corridor of Green Hill Road from Cedar Heights over to Hudson Road, and those proposals are going to come in here later this month, and we're going to take a look at that and then work with the engineer to develop some long-term improvements, more short-term improvements at Main and, Main and Green Hill on that, just to the west of the site. So again, moving along, staff recommends approval of the site plan and building design. A couple of these elements, number one and two, were discussed at the last city council meeting in February, if you remember that. P&amp;Z recommended the car wash had limited hours from 6 to 10, but then the council briefly discussed just kind of utilizing our construction noise ordinance out of the city code, which is 7 to 10. And again, Quickstar is agreeable to that. And again, no lights on the north side or banding on the north side of the gasoline canopy, and they would, they agreed to install some dimmable lights for their signs on that canopy. So that's really all I have. I think we got some people here to talk about, just saying.
Thank you, David. Yep, the plan will be, I'll open it up to council and open up the public as well, and then finish off with the council as we've done in the past. I will open it up to council if there's any preliminary statements. Mr. Bur.
Can I ask questions?
Please.
Dave, on that last slide you showed up, there were four points. Last time when we saw it, there were five points. What happened to the fifth one?
I think one of them probably was the landscaping, so that was kind of addressed in the earlier slide that they already agreed to that. And again, there's some other elements that we had for, you know, they submitted a noise plan, but as part of their letter that was listed in the staff report, those, those elements that were addressed last meeting, they all agreed to those, those conditions. And then we changed the timing on the operation of the, of the car wash and added the, the banding on the light, on the canopy.
So even though the trees were taken off, off of that list, it's still required?
It's still required, yes it is, because it's on their site plan.
And how many trees are there on the north side? You mentioned they're eight-foot trees, but how many are there?
It's a continuous line, oh, there look like eight, 10 spruces and 10 additional conifers, so roughly 20 conifers along that north side. And I think there's a mixture of some, some smaller planted areas around that picnic area.
So it's expected to be, as the picture shows, kind of a continuous line?
Yes, it's, it's a solid line, and we wanted conifers since those are like that, they're solid all year long.
Okay. And can I ask a couple other questions? There was a few other questions brought up by some of the people at some of the prior meetings, such as no overnight truck parking. Was that addressed with the developer?
Those are, Quickstar did address that, and I would like to have them kind of go over some of those details about overnight parking, truck delivery times, and like maybe wattage of the, of the lights too.
Okay, because yeah, there were, there were things that were brought up, such as no overnight parking and maybe some signs of no parking. Also, question about the music or the loudspeaker, whether that would be dimmed after a certain time of night. Hours of the car wash you went over.
And those are all conditions that we can, we can discuss tonight with, with developer.
Anything further? Mr. Wieland?
Thank you. At the time of the rejection of this project, I had had absolutely no conversations with Quickstar. No phone calls, no emails, no text messages, no personal meetings with them. At that same time, I had had over 40 messages from citizens who lived in the area. Of that group, about a third of them were in favor of the Quick, Quickstar. The other two-thirds, even though they'd been through the P&amp;Z meeting and had a chance to speak to P&amp;Z, P&amp;Z stood to what they're required to do, and that's to enforce the ordinances of our community, which clearly state that this Quickstar station is a desirable feature in an MU district. But they went beyond that. They allowed the people to speak up and got Quickstar to address some of the issues. With a number of negative responses, I thought maybe I was standing too close. And so I asked the mayor... And so I asked the mayor what could be done and he says, well, you can bring it back if you get enough support. I'm glad it's been brought back. I will tell you this, since that February nineteenth meeting, I have still had no conversations with Quickstar of any kind about the Quickstar project, none one of the four events. But I do see that when we did the reconsideration, they put out a memo on the two of March that had changed significantly. They had gone from six to eight foot trees and this is because I could see they realized the real issue was the citizens who lived directly across from them on Green Hill. There's a small number of homes that are subject to the lights and the sounds coming from this facility. And they stated in that memo that they realized that was an issue. And they decided to raise the size of those trees from eight to ten and I think it was, let me look at this, from, from six to eight, to eight to ten foot high. I've sat on the park bench right in front of that area that looks directly on the site and looking that over would be my opinion and I would hope that they would put in ten foot high, not eight foot, cross it off, because eight foot would take time to grow to where the residents there would have the shading that they were looking for. So I make that one request to Quickstar. The other request I have tonight, and this is the only time I can talk to them because it's in an open meeting and that's what it's all about and there's land use. I've had a couple of people complain that they've been to Quickstar late at night and Quickstar's chosen to be open twenty-four hours. That's their right, they're in business, they know what their market is. But there are speakers at the pumps and they said you could hear these speakers coming on later in the evening. My question to Quickstar is, you've moved the car wash, you've done a study on noise, you know that's an issue with these people, but you've also restricted the use at times when people aren't sleeping in the neighborhood. Would you be willing to restrict the use on using your speakers? I don't know what you're using them for, but I've heard you do. I've never heard them come on when I've been at a, at a Quickstar. So they're the only comments I have, I would hope Quickstar comes up and I think they've done a good job in their two March memo, but there's a two, still two areas of concern that I have, because the real issue is those homes that don't have a protection from the sight or the sound. And you've gone three quarters of the way. Is Quickstar willing to go the rest of the way? That's my question. Are you?
Thank you. Mr. Derr, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I just, Dave can either respond to it now or when the Quickstar folks, you talked about the detention plan and it meets our expectations. And I think when you talked about it the last time, you said that they had a pretty significant plan, so I'd like to have more discussion about how the Cedar Falls plan and Quickstar's plans work together and how effective they are. There's a lot of concern about runoff and that kind of thing and I just like, I trust that our expectations are high and I just want to make sure that everybody understands that runoff concern would be minimal. But might, if that's something that Quickstar needs to answer rather than you, but...
Yeah, they can follow up on this, but basically our, our plan is that we have a, I believe there's a, the original Pinnacle Prairie North Development set up an area-wide detention basin along the north side of those three lots. It was basically controlled in a ditch. So for those three properties, whatever goes there, they have to provide detention, they have to collect the ten-year storm and then filter it, run it through, you know, you know, treat the water, cool it down and get it back into the ditch and from the ditch it goes over to the area-wide detention, which is the pond on the, on the west side of, east side of Coneflower Parkway. So again, our staff has been reviewing those plans, working with Fairway and Quickstar on both of those and you can kind of see there's a couple of items on the agenda for doing a maintenance and repair agreement. So the first step is, is basically they meet, the detention meets the guidelines and then the maintenance repair agreement is, we have the authority to go onsite and fix anything that's wrong for that.
And I would just assume we have pretty high standards with all the effort we're making cleaning up Dry Run Creek, that water quality is a pretty high priority.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of the whole plan is a water quality feature, making sure it, it filters through that for any particulates or, and it, it does cool it down a little bit and then get, and then, and holds it that way.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? The board, so I will go to you next to him.
I just, one I forgot to ask, Dave, could you explain what this is? There was no explanation of that map in our packet. Can you explain what that is?
Oh, yes, in the packet, there's a number of letters and emails that were sent basically starting back in December, September when we gone, when it went through P and Z and I thought it was the easiest way just to kind of show a map of where those signatures came from. The red dots signify those who oppose the project, the green, green dots are those who are in favor of the project. So it was just kind of a, it was an easier way to look at instead of going through, combing through all those signatures. Again, there's additional signatures out of that area, you know, and other parts of the town and county, but I just kind of focused on those two areas of Eldorado Heights on the east-west side of Green, Maine and, and north of Heritage Hills.
So that was from all the different petitions you had?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz.
Mr. Sturt, you mentioned the regional detention basin and then that goes into an area pond, on north edge of development. I observed no detention basement for that region, it's a creek that runs underneath Green Hill right now. So I don't know how you're going to retain rain events. I'd be curious if they'd speak to that, because it's an ongoing creek as far as I can see right now.
Anytime there's development, we require them to retain the stormwater and release it at a, at a certain rate. And so that's all part of the, the site plan. You, you won't see it now, I mean, if, if these were approved, they would build those detention basins and then it would be released into the ditch and into the regional pond that's on the east side of Coneflower. But they're not, they're not there today, they would be built as part of these site plans.
So the pond will be built?
Correct.
I guess, and to explain that a little further, detention basin is essentially a concrete holding facility or are we talking something different here?
No, it's, it's a, it's just created, it has, it has to retain so much water and based on calculations, they determine its size and it, it doesn't have to be concrete. It, it, it holds the water and releases it at a pre-development rate. So right now you have, you have an open field and the standard is that when you get rain, that open field, keep, it's, it slows the water down and filters the water at a certain rate. Now when you add concrete and asphalt, it runs off quicker, so you want to take that water and you want to store it and you want to release it at that pre-development rate. So with these, with both the Fairway and the Quickstar site, they will both be building detention ponds that will store that water that runs off their site and release it at a pre-development rate. And it, they don't necessarily have to be concrete, they're, in most cases actually they're, they're typically just graded with earthen, with earth and, and they basically create a hole and then it allows the water to release at a, at a slower rate. Then it would release into the ditch and go underneath Coneflower to the regional detention pond.
Thank you.
And so they, they aren't necessarily always designed to be wet ponds. They're, they may, they may look dry during arid, arid times of year and then after it rains, it'll hold the water and if there's, if there's obviously a lot of water, they will be wet for quite a while and then they will release into that regional pond.
So how's this water release at a measured rate? What controls it?
There's an, there's an outflow structure that, that's set at, at a certain elevation and allows the water to flow out at a given rate.
But then you're saying there's a regional pond, because I don't see a regional pond there right now.
It, well...
That's going to take care of that whole, practically that entire development.
It's on the east side of Coneflower, on the other side of the street and it may be, it may be very, it's winter, so it could be very dry now and it might be just all willows.
I guess that brings up another question, when the ground has froze, your runoff is a hundred percent and we've had rains now through late winter, early spring with the ground froze, you're going to have dramatically more runoff that's going to get down into Green Hill, Dry Run Creek and it's already impaired. So wouldn't we be contributing with this location?
The detention ponds that would be built, store that water and, and they release it with these structures at a given rate, so it's not dependent on whether the ground is frozen or not, because I mean, the worst, worst case scenario is concrete, asphalt. Doesn't matter if that's frozen or not, that's always impervious, water will not penetrate, it'll run off. So, and then these, these ponds, it doesn't, it doesn't filter through the ground, the pond holds them and as that water level rises, there's an outflow structure that, that controls the release rate of that water to pre-development conditions. And then it goes in the, in the ditch channel and underneath the road into the regional pond, which again, is another method of storing it and releasing it at a slower rate than just as if the water ran onto concrete and just, and, and just ran to the, to the nearest creek.
So what's the calculations to determine how big this initial, the first retention pond has to be, detention cell?
I believe it is, I'd have to confirm, but I believe it's a, it's a ten-year release rate. Well, I may be misspeaking. I'd need to, I'd need to confirm that, what the design is. I mean, it's, it's a standard that we use for every development, whether it's a gas station or, or a fairway or it has, it has to hold so much stormwater and release it at a two-year rate pre-development. So it, it's, it's a much slower release rate than...
So if there's a rain event that fills this...
Yes.
Then the water essentially just flows right over the top and down into Dry Run Creek. Reason I ask that is I got ahold of KWWL, the meteorologist, and I asked for the rain events in the last thirty years over three inches. And they said that the way to calculate it accurately is to do a forty-eight hour because you can have so much rain before midnight, so much after midnight. And they had forty-one times in the last thirty years that the rainfall was more than three inches. In the last ten years, they had twenty-one times that it was over three inches. And to give you some examples, taking three days together, we remember the nineteen ninety-nine rains, eleven and a quarter inches fell in three days in July. In May of ninety-nine, six point six inches fell. Two thousand sixteen, six point seven nine inches fell. I mean, that's rain about this deep over everything. So if we have contaminants in a gas station that spills when you fill up your gas tank or the semi that's filling up has a malfunction on their nozzle and gas spills, and these big rain events, it's all going to be washed right down through the detention, down into Dry Run Creek and, and pollute. And then as a city, we're spending money on the stormwater maintenance fee on our utility bill to clean us all up. So I have a great concern at the location of this gas station, because I, I look, as a new council, I went in, I looked at the MU residential and I just read it right out of the code or looked it up, it says, "The mixed-use residential district strives to encourage innovative development that incorporates high-quality building design, careful site planning, preservation of unique environmental features with an emphasis on the creation of open spaces and amenities that enhance the quality of life of residents." I think what I just described doesn't exactly enhance the quality of life. Further on, as it describes the different things that could be built there, it further states, "Planning and zoning commission may recommend, but the city council may deny the plan, to the end that the plan preserves or doesn't preserve the intent and purpose of this section to promote public health, safety and general welfare." And all of you have seen the emails about litter, noise, air pollution, all the things that people complain about, but by far the biggest concern that I have is the pollutants that will get into the groundwater that we have to somehow clean up. That's...
Well, your, your analogy about rain, rain events, as engineers, we can't, we can't design for the worst event. There isn't enough money to design for the worst event, so you have to design for what is agreed upon as a realistic event. So I believe the, the onsite storage, I believe, stores a ten-year event and releases at a two-year rate. Well, what happens if we have a hundred-year event? Well, certainly that, that pond, those ponds get overwhelmed. The regional detention pond is designed, I believe, for a hundred-year event and released at a two-year rate. So if it surpasses the, the, the site ponds, it gets to the regional and is stored and released at a two-year rate. If we get an event greater than a hundred-year storm, we're all in trouble. We, we, we can't build storm sewers large enough to handle that kind of capacity. We are currently designing our levee to handle a five-hundred-year flood. What happens if we got a six-hundred-year flood? So...
Those things, I understand that. The, the point I'm getting at is we're putting a facility that dispenses carcinogenic liquids, polluting, you know, fuels. There's radiator overflows on a hot summer day that's going to go onto the concrete and wash down, battery acid, brake disc powders and things like that. So I agree, you can't develop a, a catch basin to cover five-hundred-year floods and so on, but you do get to choose where you put a facility that could pollute in that top of the catch basin for Dry Run Creek, which goes into the Cedar River. That's my big concern.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, please. Is there a benefit or a disadvantage to the regional detention pond being as close as, as it is to this site? One way or the other? Just out of curiosity.
I'd have to think about that if there's a real advantage to that. We, we do try to incorporate regional detention now to hold more water, release it at a, at a given rate. With it being so close, anything that comes off of the Quickstar Fairway properties, if, if their site is overwhelmed, it would, it would be the first water really to get to that regional detention pond and be held there. But I, I guess I'd have to give some more thought if there's any real significant advantage to that.
Sure. Thank you. Anything further from council? I will now open it up to the public discussion. I know there's a lot of folks here with a lot of passion, we all appreciate that, especially your right to show up and speak. I think most of you here also know we really try to adhere to the five-minute rule and I'm going to do that as well this evening. There might be a slight exception depending upon the developer. He had a lot of, there's a lot of questions related to, to answers the council is looking for. So with that, I'll open up to the public. Come on up, sir.
I have done a lot of study of the highway structure in Cedar Falls and the problem at Green Hill and other streets is in part the result of what happened to University. But there are some factors that you need to consider. I mean, some people have tried to examine how bad the traffic will be with the addition of Safeway and the addition of a Quickstar. Well, there's other factors to consider. We have, I think, almost completed, I don't know when it'll be actually completed, the Green Hill extension. And as I understand, best reader schools on that Green Hill extension. Green Hill extension goes to the University of Northern Iowa and at that particular point, there used to be a, a number of those people who would attend events at you and I that would come down university. Now, they would be encouraged to go down Green Hill. And I have it from good authority that the intention of putting traffic on Green Hill was intentional. Now, the result has been what you see, the, the tremendous congestion that, that is there. And you complicate that by having a grocery store which has a lot of in and out traffic. You complicate that by having a Quickstar which has a lot of in and out traffic. And then the council in its wisdom put the public safety building out there. And with the police traffic and the fire department traffic, you have really, really a situation which could mirror what has happened to New York City, where you can go across town if you have an hour to go fifteen, twenty blocks. Now, the point is... Now, the point is, you, in all that has been presented, there was nothing about the traffic. There was nothing about how people get across Green Hill. There was nothing about accommodation for the trucks that will increase on Green Hill. And, as has been indicated before, according to the plan, you don't intend to do anything about Green Hill till 2021. So Green Hill Road will be a mess. I mean, it'll be bad enough now that you've approved Safeway. It'll be even worse if you go one step further and approve the Quick Star. The point raised by Councilman Cruz is a point that has been raised before by Larry Wykoff. He can't be here tonight, but he asked me to make the point on his behalf. Now, Councilman Cruz has talked about some toxic runoff, but there's toxic runoff every time they clean the driveway by the gas pumps. And that toxic runoff may not go down into the storage tank, but it will have an effect. And there's another aspect of it. This is basically a area that is populated by homes, okay? And even though the effort is taken to take care of it, there still is the case of the possibility of explosions.
Thank you, Mr. Skane. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions to staff by council?
There are some empty chairs if some of the people in the back wanted to come have a seat.
There's a few down here for those folks standing up, and everyone else has to scoot over some. Any other firmative comments from council?
I wanted to clarify, John, that the traffic studies and conversations happened previous meeting, and in fact, in a couple of P and Z meetings as well. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Every time a site develops, we require a traffic impact study, and we review those results, and that's been discussed previously.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, sir. Sorry. Come on up. Thanks.
I'm Ron Florrie. Live at 301 Spruce Hill Drive with my wife Denise. We both continue to oppose the Quick Star proposal on Green Hill and Coneflower. We do want neighborhood-friendly development and do favor the fairway. It looks like it is more neighborhood-friendly. And that's the kind of more neighborhood-friendliness than what we're seeing with Quick Star. It does sound like there's some additional adaptations they're willing to make, but a 24-hour business is not something that's considered neighborhood-friendly. And then, as Councilman Daryl Cruz pointed out, runoff pollutions are a real concern because there are rain events that are greater than two, three inches at a time, and that retention pond that's just on the other side of Coneflower is going to really get affected when that happens. The, another concern that I have is, was raised at a Kiwanis meeting, I attended this past Wednesday, the 28th, with Rough Risers in Cedar Falls. Luann Alameo, a food and nutrition expert, as well as a Blue Zones-trained expert, and she helped kick off the Blue Zones here about seven years ago with the Guttner being present giving the talk. And my wife and I attended that, and we are very enthusiastic supporters of it, as well as continue to be enthusiastic supporters. And we enjoy riding bicycles on the trails. But Luann noted, where Cedar Falls was number one in the state for Blue Zones rating, it slipped to number 11 by allowing urban sprawl, neighborhoods becoming less connected by safe sidewalks and trails, and the trails aren't being fully maintained. We've particularly noted that during construction times. Last year, for a lot of the time, there was an interruption on the Green Hill Trail going from the State Drive going east. And now the main, South Main Trail is really interrupted. I don't see how that's going to be remedied for quite a while. So we very much like the idea of neighborhood-friendly type activities, and don't feel that 24-hour business fits in the neighborhood-type friendly quality of life. And quality of life is important. And even though the so-called mixed-use allows for a 24-hour business, I think the city council has the authority and ability and responsibility to override in where there are neighborhoods. And so I would ask your consideration for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Florrie. Anyone further? Yes, sir. From the back coming up. Thanks.
Mayor, council, Mike Stout, 206 Spruce Hill Drive, just down the street from the Florries. This is the last time, hopefully, that I'll have to be up here, because I feel like we've done this a few times. Voted on it, came up and talked about it, voted on again. Here we are, something that you've already voted on, where there were no real material changes to the plan that you voted on already, which is obviously the Quick Star that we're talking about. I've been pretty persistent in presenting to you, and you all know who I am, I'm the one who filed the FOIA request, asking for your emails. Been persistent saying that this is not a witch hunt, and I can assure you that this is not. I'm not that kind of person. I just wanted some transparency, which some of you admittedly have shown admirably, and I appreciate that as a citizen. Others haven't responded. Didn't get anything in this 186-page packet from at least one of you. I brought it with me tonight to show you how thick it is. It's a lot of paper. Do you know how many emails are in here from people who want this? I can take a guess. Seven. So there are seven emails from what you turned over of people that are in support of this. As you can see, a lot of people here who aren't, they happen to be the people who are directly impacted, myself included, by this building that's going to be basically in our front yard. I don't want to bore you with the actual percentage, but seven divided by 186, I do math for a living, it's not very high. Like I said, there's no material change, so I don't understand why we're revoting. The simple undeniable fact of this matter is that a 24-hour convenience store doesn't really fit our neighborhood. I really appreciate everything that you said, Daryl, about the groundwater. That honestly, I've been so flustered by this, I told, I've told you all when I emailed you multiple times over this past three, four weeks, whatever it was, that I, that I am really, really flustered and upset by this. Rob, you had told the mayor, and you told the mayor that you took a sick day.
Just a mayor point of order. Pardon?
Yes, please. Now, we need to remove the names...
Sorry about that. Oh. I apologize about that. Okay. So I'm a long-distance runner, and I apologize about that, sir. And in the mornings, I like to obviously run around Cedar Falls, maybe you may have seen me. Imagine how much this has weighed on me. Imagine how much this has weighed on the people that are actually, you know, directly, directly impacted on this right across the street. How do I make, how do I make my point even more clear? Do I have to email you every time that there's a robbery at a gas station and let you know that almost all of them happen between the hours of 10:00 and 4:00 AM? Do I have to stand 500 feet from your house with a microphone and say, "Pump 7's ready"? Do I have to play some annoying pop music at 24 hours a day? Do I have to get a red light, a red, excuse me, translucent light and stand, I don't know, 500, 600 feet from your house? I hope you understand where we're coming from, and that this isn't something that we just don't want in our backyard. This particular project, we don't want in our backyard because it just doesn't fit. I can't do any of those things that I just described, so that's why I'm here tonight to tell you that I am a real person, like I said last time. I own property. I graduated from Northern Iowa. I moved back here, and I want to stay. But man, when this kind of stuff keeps happening, it makes me wonder, do I want to stay here? I keep telling myself, yes, and I hope you'll take that into consideration tonight, that there are a lot of people out here in this crowd just like me who are really thinking about that right now. And we would ask for your consideration tonight to vote this down.
Thank you, Mr. Staff. Appreciate it. Anyone further to discuss? Thank you.
Jill Fisher, 203 Cordoba Avenue. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I would like to address you, to, excuse me, I would like to address you tonight with the intention of encouraging you and the citizens of Cedar Falls to actively engage in a partnership in the development of our city. Now, I've had the opportunity, and I've watched and looked for different words that just kind of popped out at me. One of them was this partnership. Partnership is a person who takes part in an undertaking with another or others. I didn't see the word silent, as in silent partnership. So what's this about ex parte? In 2010, the state of Iowa outlined what they believed would be a seemingly popular plan to the cities in Iowa. The city of Cedar Falls then adopted the comprehensive plan in 2012. Wow, great, huh? This plan outlines the responsibility not only of the city, but also of the citizens. So I took the liberty to go in and pull out some bullet points. Number one, transparent public process. So then I went back to my computer, transparent, okay? Open to or shared by all the people in an area. Public, easy to perceive or detect. Residents, bullet point number two. Residents create a shared vision to promote health, safety, and prosperity of the community. The plan is designed as a working document that both defines future goals and provides a flexible implementation. That's giving you permission to be flexible from this plan. Public participation. Hmm, public participation. Community character. Residents play the most important role in establishing and realizing the vision of this plan. So that means we as residents have the ability to be able to come to you as congressmen and women and say, "Listen to us, please." So the goals on the city's website, as listed under economic development, state the city of Cedar Falls will establish long-term partnerships to ensure that, quote, "Our citizens are our business," unquote. So I scratched my head, and I don't have, I don't have any dandruff, so I'm just scratching my head because I don't understand. If the city continues to implement ex parte to its citizens, then the city will exclude the partnership role of us as citizens from this comprehensive plan. And we will experience more occurrences like Quick Star without representation. I encourage the citizens of Cedar Falls to engage, engage in a partnership with your city, either through communication with your elected officials at these meetings, through emails, or direct conversation. There should be no ex parte partnership, excuse me, there should be no ex parte imposed on the cities, citizens of Cedar Falls concerning communications with elected officials.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
May I take a quick response to that?
To the council or to staff? Yes.
To her comment about ex parte.
Yes.
Ex parte applies only to land use. And the purpose of it is that these public inputs must be done with both sides present. You all have had three opportunities when that area was zoned, MU District. That was years ago. That went through a three-stage process where both parties, for and against, did that. We have a five-year plan where both parties and citizens get together to determine what we're going to do, and we have a 10-year plan. We take our citizens' input very, very seriously. On the question of Quick Star, ex parte is enforced because it's land use, and that's the only place where we get restricted. You can talk to me about snow not being plowed, and I'll sit down and have coffee and go over and let you know my views and how I'm going to vote. But on land use, you've got to make sure both parties are present. They were present at P and Z, the three meetings, maybe more on this. This has gone on for a long time. So we have honored our people's need and the model that we have that our people are our business, if you look at our business cards. The fact you're here tonight, and Quick Star is here, I presume they're here, is another example of where ex parte really works on land use, because you don't have one group that's giving undue influence, which is what I felt I had and why I rejected it on the first time. I had 40 emails from citizens, like the guy says, a very small portion, four. And I got a little too close, and I said, "Am I being fair?" That's why we're here tonight, to allow your inputs again. And so I just wanted to let you know that I think ex parte is misunderstood, the purpose of it.
Thank you, Mr. Florrie. Any further comments from council, staff? I wanted to clarify, Mr. Rogers, this ex parte came into play due to a Supreme Court decision based on Iowa state law?
That's correct. Interpreting another facet of land use decision-making by bodies such as this, as quasi-judicial or judge-like, which means that kind of act like judges and make our decisions in an open forum like this.
Thank you. Let the speaker right in front, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. First, I want to start out and say thank you for all your hard work that you guys do. I know it is very tough. My name is Steve Kelly, and I reside at 223 Spruce Hills Drive in Cedar Falls. And I am located directly north, directly north of where the Quick Star will be. And when my wife and I purchased this home back in 2012, we had no idea that we'd be looking at a gas station. Chances are, had we known that would be a possibility, we would not have bought it. And we love the home. I love the home. And back in February of 19, February 19 of 2018, the vote, the chamber voted no to build the Quick Star. And now we're back discussing it again, and another vote. I hope you'll vote no this time because we do not need another gas station in the area. There are many gas stations in the area, and it's just plain overkill. With Fairway being approved and soon to be built, many of the items that Quick Star will be selling, Fairway will be selling as well. Again, overkill. Having a convenience store gas station does not fit the model of the neighborhood. And as you've seen by the petitions that have been turned in, the majority of the neighbors in the area are not in favor of it. I spend many of my summer evenings, and now, now that I'm retired, I spend a lot of my time in the backyard, and having a convenience store gas station that's open 24 hours a day is just not what I had in mind. And I would also speculate that most of you, if we were to take a poll, I would bet most of you would not want to have a convenience store in your backyard. If you were living where I live and where other neighbors live, I would bet that you would not want to have that. I'm aware that it's zoned to allow this type of business, but zoning can be changed. A business with low impact, such as a pharmacy or a bank, would be ideal for this location, and that would not be duplicating what Fairway will be offering. A business like these would have benefit for the growing Western Home Community citizens. I know there are many concerns that have been discussed over the last few months regarding the proposal, and there are still concerns. I do not want to see my home value go down because of having a convenience store or gas station directly across the street from me, as well as the concern for gas spills getting into the groundwater. For those that voted no last February, thank you. I hope you'll continue to vote no. And for those that voted yes, I hope you reconsider your vote and vote no. Please hear the concerns of the citizens and neighbors regarding this vote. And again, thank you for your time and all your hard work. And I have a copy for the... And I have a copy for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Was there someone else up the middle here, kind of lining up there, but I have not forgotten folks in the room for free? Name and address, please.
My name's Kathy McCormick, and I live at 4022 South Lawn Road. Many people have presented facts to you, including myself, in previous emails, but tonight I want to speak from my experiences and from my heart. In 1975, my then-husband and I dug the first foundation in the heritage section of town at 123 Spruce Hills Drive. We drove up through a field to get to the site of our future home. To the west was South Main going all the way out to Ridgeway. To the north, we, we had a clear view of University Avenue that we could actually see cars going back and forth. To the east was either a cornfield or a bean field as far as you could see, and to the immediate south was a pasture that was home to horses. I watched all the houses built up and down Spruce Hills. Spruce Hills was a dead-end street that ended into a field, had a huge area of dirt where my sons used to take their Tonka trucks and play for hours. The site of the new homes on the south side of Spruce Hills used to be a field where the neighborhood kids could be found on a regular basis playing baseball. In fact, my oldest son here tonight chose to purchase that very same lot where he played with his trucks and has built a house and, and lives there now at 224 Spruce Hills Drive. Then came Green Hill Road, and I watched for months as that was being built. There were mounds of dirt, the boys rode their motorcycles up and down, and lights through our bedroom windows all night as they worked 24 hours a day to get the road finished. Finally, the completion arrived and traffic began moving back and forth to their destinations. A sound barrier was constructed to help eliminate the noise and keep our privacy from this new development. It helped, but nothing could replace the ability to walk back and enjoy the horses and see the open fields. And yet, never once did you see me come before this council and complain about the growth of that area. We watched as progress continued, and soon the Western Home Communities were beginning to surface, and eventually a bank, the Lockard Building, dentist offices, medical associates, I'll still call it medical associates, it's always been that to me, fire station, and a pond with a walking trail around it. But with all that came a look of classiness and elegance. I felt like it was growth in the right direction. After all, I was giving up my total freedom of serenity that I used to have. Had a beautiful water fountain and streets with medians that have flowers and shrubs that give off that ambiance that makes me smile when I drive by. I'm looking forward to having the new Fairway move into the neighborhood as well, because they represent the solitude that once existed in this, in this neighborhood and have open hours that support that lifestyle. They're closed on Sundays and holidays to even further support their respectful neighborhood attitude. Even having the fire station so close to our neighborhood was an initial concern, and although I can still hear the sirens way down on South Lawn, I understand that those sirens are a response to a call from someone needing help. How can I complain about that? I also know the firemen and the paramedics make it a priority to use their sirens only as safety and necessary, and trying not to disrupt the quietness of the neighborhood, and I appreciate that. And then along comes Quick Star, thinking they too can fit into the character of our neighborhood. Unfortunately, that isn't the case. I don't care how much you dim the lights, you turn and you move the car wash, you alder some of the decor, or you put in eight to 10-foot trees, high, foot, foot trees, it's still a gas station. Not only a gas station, but one that wants to be open 24 hours a day and every day of the year. And I realize that most people who drive a car have a need to buy gas, but is this the corner of our serene neighborhood really the best place in Cedar Falls for it to be located? I think not. Rather than say no to Quick Star altogether, can't we look for a different and more appropriate location for it? That way, it's a win-win situation for Quick Star and for the people who care about keeping our neighborhood growing in a positive fashion. And I'd just like to ask a couple of questions to the council members, if I could. Could I have the, the council members who represent wards two and five to?
My order.
And your five?
I'm five.
And your two. And that's the area that's most directly affected. And then we also have two at-large council members, correct? And those are?
Ms. Wheeler, Ms. Wheeler.
Those two, okay. So I, I would hope, you know, looking at the signatures of over 400 people on the petition against the Quick Star, all the numerous emails that you've received, the number of people who are here tonight, I'd hope that at a bare minimum, that you four, who represent all of these people, would vote the desires of the Cedar Falls citizens that you represent and to please vote no. Thank you.
McCormick, appreciate it. Sure, Steve, come on up.
My name is Steve Efrum. My wife, Joss, and I reside at 327 Balboa. I'd like to address two of the issues that were just discussed a few minutes ago and then briefly come and talk about the remarks I was prepared to talk about tonight. There's some discussion about runoff and treatment. As a consultant in air quality regulations, I know a little bit about treating pollutants. And from what I've seen, there's not nearly the complexity nor the expense on this site to treat the types of pollutants that will come from this site. Eventually, they will get into the groundwater. Secondly, as the comments were discussed on another issue, and I'll come back to it at the end, but the, I like to say that Joss and I have resided here for nearly four decades in this location on Balboa. And during that time, we've seen a lot of developments come and go. We have seen Highway 58, which was originally planned to be built right down South Main Street. A better location was found after community input, and it's worked very well. Walmart was proposed in the same location as what you're looking at tonight for Quick Star. After considerable input from the community, a better location was found. Lowe's was supposed to go on this location. And while Lowe's did not build another store in Cedar Falls, Menards built a bigger store not very far away. A large apartment complex was to be built just south of Green Hill on Main Street. A lot of community input, and it was eventually voted down. It was relocated to another part of Cedar Falls, which worked very well. Casey's was proposed, as we've talked about many times. It's found a better location. There could be no doubt that if this proposal for Quick Star gets voted down tonight, Quick Star, Quick Star will find a more suitable location in Cedar Falls, and we hope that you would see that. In the interest of time, I won't go into other issues that have been talked about. Just ask you, just say no to this proposal. Consider the input of all those you've heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Steve Tripolino. I live at 320 Balboa. My family and I have lived at this address since 1985. Like most middle-class Americans, our home is our biggest investment that we'll probably ever make. It was never our long-term plan to remain here for 33 years. We have stayed here not because we were lacking in options, but because we became to love the location, the culture, and the character of our neighborhood. It's a vibrant and growing, but peaceful, clean, law-abiding neighborhood. It is characterized by folks who care about their homes, yards, health, and neighbors. We care about the safety of our homes and families as well as, as well as looking out for our neighbors. We drive carefully, keep our streets, yards and yards litter-free, clear of snow on the sidewalks. We enjoy use of the walking and bike trails. We have good access to many services already, including numerous nearby gas and convenience store. By my count, there are 12 within a radius of less than three miles of our home. As a licensed Realtor with Oak Ridge Realti, Realtors, I am highly aware of the negative impact that a proposed Quick Star would have on the value of my home as well as property values throughout my neighborhood. It is widely acknowledged that the location is the most important factor when investing in a home. Price and location go hand in hand with buyers. A house in a quiet, stable neighborhood will be in greater demand, sell faster, and command a higher selling price than the comparable home in a less desirable neighborhood, one with traffic issues, litter, noise, and crime. Location often dictates everything else in a transaction. You can maintain your home, update, redecorate, and landscape, but you're stuck with your surroundings. Any commercial development can depress residential value within a half-mile to a mile radius of the location. Homes in close proximity to a 24/7 gas station and convenience store are often considered highly undesirable because the homeowners have no control over traffic, noise, pollution, loitering, and crime. These factors have a dramatic adverse effect on the value of the home. By my estimation, around 10%. In 2016, Real Estate News published 10 industries that diminished property value the most. Convenience stores with a gas station was number two on their list. A quote from the article, "People will be driving in and out of your intersection, hanging out at the property, buying lots of Lotto tickets, cigarettes, and beer when they gas up." The article went on to state that "common sense would show that the increase in robberies, accidents, traffic, and pedestrians would add to a decreased property value." A 2010 UNI study entitled "The Effect of Leaking Underground Tanks on the Values of Nearby Houses" looked at the monetary effect of proximity to a leaking underground storage tank on housing value right here in Cedar Falls. Price impacts in the study ranged from 5.5% to 11% lost in value of medium-sized homes. Currently, 19 homes in Section 4 South in Cedar Falls are listed on the Northeast Iowa Regional Board of Realtors MLS. I anticipate that number will rise significantly if Quick Star is approved. Finally, I'd like you to note on the petition in favor of Quick Star in the location that multiple signatures include those who reside in communities of Plainfield, Waverly, Allison, Ionia, Tripola, Shellrock, Clarksville, Waterloo, Dyke, Trayer, Conrad, Hudson, Evansdale, Parkersburg, LaPorte City, and Janesville. These folks are not stakeholders.
One minute left, Steve. One minute left, thank you.
These folks are not stakeholders, do not have an investment in our community, and are not represented by our city council. We cannot count on them or on Quick Star to protect the investment that we have made in our community. We count on you to do that. More than 400 actual Cedar Falls residents have signed the petition in opposition to Quick Star in this location in hopes that you will do just that. Please consider the character of our established neighborhood, the safety of all who pass by, the good faith investments that constituents have made in home and community. Vote no on Quick Star. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosemary, I'd see you up. You're good.
Rosemary Beach, Western Home Community. I tell you, I am just overwhelmed. I had all these things I was going to tell you, and guess what? They've all said them, and they've said them so well. I did want to bring out the one thing, though, that was right off the bat, was "Our citizens are our business." And I remembered that the other day, and I remember saying to John Cruz, "I think you need to put that on your wall, so you people look at it all the time." And I think it is an absolutely wonderful motto. I haven't seen it on anything for a long time, but I asked a few people who had been around as long as I have, and they remembered it. So, that's the one thing I wanted to bring up, and it already was brought up. So I had, was fortunate to be at a tourism meeting when we were talking about customer appreciation and how to treat your customers. And it said, "What feelings will visitors associate with their time in Cedar Falls?" And Waterloo, but we're, we're doing Cedar Falls. I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. And that's Maya Angelou. So I just thought I'd bring that up. So we have exceptional service here, and I consider this is a service group that sits right up here because you are, you are representing me. I had about three articles of newspapers that I thought had interesting things to say, so. One of them was talking about the College Hill Plan, and this is clear back in December. We've been talking about this whole thing a long time. And it says, "The issue of the building on College Hill. This issue deserves a lot more discussion before it gets to a decision and benefits the neighborhood," which is College Hill, but I'm bringing it here. "Zoning ordinances are created presumably to accommodate the best interests of all involved. Perhaps zoning ordinance specific to the project need to be looked at more closely." And I thought, "Well, that was a good idea." And that was from The Courier, and it was in their commentary, and I still think that's a good idea. Then we had one from The Courier, and this was "Waverly's Casey Rezoning Advances." And it's talking about rezoning and doing the same thing we're practically doing here. So it gets down to the two members who are siding with the neighbors worried about increased traffic, safety, declining property values, same here. He agreed that the city's comprehensive use plan, as well as the construction of the Cedar River Parkway, made it desirable to Casey's. Well, of course, we have a wonderful place to put a gas station here. But he disagreed, it trumped neighbors' property rights. And I thought, "Aha, somebody in the Waverly Council got what we're after." So I just put that down there. And then lastly, this is from, again, this is in the Register, and this is from Elma, Iowa. And I have to tell you, it's about pig farms, because it says, "The county plans to challenge the project in court even though the state approved it." And the gentleman who was talking about this says, "We should have more control over what goes into our county." Who supports, and he supports that we do look at it more for, more logically. And up here, he says, "Just because it's legal doesn't mean it's good." And I thought, "Well..." Then one other thing, "Neighbors feel like facilities are getting shoved down their throats." And I guess that's kind of, whether you're doing a pig lot or a grocery store, it's the same thing for this neighborhood. We don't want something shoved down our throats. And I know it passed everything in zoning, and that's what we have zoning for, but somehow, somehow, we have to have a little line that says "common sense." And this neighborhood is a neighborhood. I suspect that, and I really think that the gas station has done a wonderful job of accommodating what all we have asked, but you know, I feel like probably there's a big room somewhere that those people, the people doing that are going to go back to, and on a wall is a big piece of Cedar Falls, a big map, and they've got pins in it all over like this. Sure, it's going to make money, but does that money stay in Cedar Falls? Not really, truly, do they really, do they have, do they have a feeling like these neighbors do about what happens in Cedar Falls? So mine's coming on from more of a personal feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Anyone further, yes, or come on up in the middle? Hang on a second, John, sure. Just state your name and address for me, please, and...
My name's Brady Groon, 4025 Carlton Drive, less than a mile from this site. Kind of funny how you stand up here and the light's kind of paralyzing a little bit, so I've got some notes here. I'm going to try to, to lean on a little bit, but I guess I just wanted to say, first off, I'll just say that I'm in favor of the project. I think that it's smart development. I think it's good development. I think it's quality development. And I think it's a good corporate citizen that has proved their worth to our community over and over again in all of their locations. Went through a similar process, I remember, back in the corner of 58 and Ridgway, down there near Highway 20, and that was told that it wasn't going to be a good, a good fit. It's a gas station. We don't want a gas station. We don't want the crime. We don't want this. We don't want that. Quick Star did everything that they could to prove their worth to us, and I think that there probably isn't a person in this room that would say that that was a regrettable project. I see this as another project that is going to add to and enhance the quality of life of people, not just in that immediate area. Obviously, I can't predict the future any more than anybody else can. But like I said, I live less than a mile away. I'm a, I'm an in-favor person on this project. We all know... We all know that people that are in favor of projects don't get off their couch very often. So, I understand that you hear a lot more from the people that are against it. If I was against something, I'd probably be more likely to get up. I didn't get off my couch the first three times that this was talked about, and I've been in favor of it since day one. I think also, if we looked at it, though, and we said that you had a petition of 100 people, 200 people, 400 people, whatever that number is, if you held a general election and that's all that voted in our town, we would look at that not as a success and not as something that you would look at and say, "We had 400 people vote on an issue, so that must be the way that everybody in town feels." So, I think that that's just something I'd like everybody to consider, that there are people in this community that are in favor of the project that aren't standing up here tonight. There are people that I talk to, and I think that they're, they should hold some weight because even though you're voted in and you're run for election in your ward, at the end of the day, you're trying to make decisions for the betterment of the entire city. And if there are 400 households in your ward, but something is good for the entire city, I don't think that that's something that should be held back because that ward, the people that are right there, I get it, change is hard. Nobody likes change. Change is the unknown, and so that's always hard. But that's why you're here. That's why you have the experts that come in and talk to you. That's why you have the thick packets that you've looked at, that you've weighed. That's why you have traffic engineers that tell you whether traffic's going to be a problem or not. Somebody coming up here, me coming up here and telling you, "No, it's not." I can't tell you that. I can think that, but somebody coming up here and telling you that it is going to be a problem is the same thing. But a traffic engineer, or wastewater, or detention, that's why you have engineers. Detention basins are there. They're designed by professionals to handle this exact thing. I don't understand all of it either, but I know that there's people that have been doing this for decades that went to school, that studied this for a long time. They're not going to allow something like that to happen if it's not going to meet the guidelines. So, that's my two cents on that. As far as the runoff and the detention, I think it's a little bit of a disingenuous argument by a lot of people, too, because I keep hearing, "It'd be better somewhere else. Why don't we put it somewhere else?" Well, if you're truly worried about wastewater, if you're truly worried about the contamination, shouldn't we be saying, "No other gas stations ever in Cedar Falls?" Or is this a "not in my backyard" issue? I get it. I live within a mile, but I don't live right next door. But at the same time, it's zoned. It's proper for that use. Somebody that lives there, I think that there's a little bit of a doomsday prospect that it's going to do this and this and this. I really don't buy into that because we haven't seen that bear out in other areas. But to say, "Let's put it somewhere else," that strikes me a little disingenuous because you're saying that you want that wastewater that you're so worried about to be somebody else's problem? So, I just, I don't really get that. Traffic, hate to tell you, but Fairway's going to drive more traffic as a destination than Quick Star will. Quick Star is going to pick up people that are driving by that want to go and get a loaf of bread. But somebody that lives up by Casey's on University, they're not going to drive to Quick Star. They're going to go to Casey's. Somebody that lives up by Casey's on University that wants to go to Fairway, they're going to drive to Fairway. So, the traffic issue, Fairway is going to drive probably more traffic as far as out of neighborhood traffic. And then, the last thing I just want to say is, every development that you have to vote on is going to be the end of us. It's going to be the death of us for one reason or another. Roundabouts are going to kill people. They're going to cause cancer. They're going to do this and that. Main Street's going to die because we made the street curvy now. What a horrible idea the industrial park is. Those are all positive things, and I commend you for voting positively on those. I encourage you to vote positively on those, too.
Thank you, Brady.
Sir, may I have your name again?
Brady Grun.
Spell it.
First name Brady, B-R-A-D-Y. Last name Grun, G-R-U-H-N.
You wouldn't believe how much hearing aids heard that first time. Thank you.
Nope, that's all right.
Come up in front here, please.
Good evening, and I stand here as the second person in favor of this project. My name is John Dutcher, D-U-T-C-H-E-R. I live at 1238 Clark Drive, and I've invested in the Valboa Point Project. So, I'm involved with that. One of the things I want to talk about is, I've been a citizen, a resident of Cedar Falls for over 70 years now. I love it here, and I like to stay here because of the progressive way that I've seen Cedar Falls grow over the years, and I'm very impressed with that. Now, one of the things I've seen is that Cedar Falls has changed. It's now where it used to be an 8 o'clock to 5 o'clock operation. Because of everything we've got going on, Cedar Falls businesses, activities are 24/7 operation. The Western Home employs people 24/7. The Cedar Falls Police Station and Fire Station are 24/7 operation. The hospital is a 24/7 operation. People get off work at 2 o'clock in the morning. If they would like to have a soda or fill up their car with gas or something like that. The days of basically getting off at 5 o'clock, stopping by at a place that closes at 7:00 are gone. Cedar Falls is a 24/7 operation. That's the way it is. And I see that in my own home. I ran a retail business for 30 years. I've got two nieces and nephews. One works at Tyson's, second shift, gets off at 12:30 at night, every night. My other, my niece that's living with me works at McDonald's. She runs the third shift. She goes in at 10:00, gets off at 6:00. So, having businesses that accommodate those kind of people, and they're all over through our neighborhoods, every neighborhood has them, that's the way it is. Second point is, this Quick Star, and it's very attractive, it'll add, enhance that particular neighborhood, will add about 100 to 120 new jobs to the area. You could use that. Third point I want to bring up, and I received an email from Bill Ramsey, longtime Realtor who has got no skin in the game, I guess, that basically he's been a Realtor for 60 years, past president of the Blackhawk County Realtors Association. And he said, he stated in his email to me, "The orderly flow and expansion of residential neighborhoods are best served if there are convenience and service stores periodically. If it is not, it won't be considered part of the good neighborhood." I know there are a couple objections to progress, but the corner store next to, next to the property, like the corner store next to the property, but anybody else will actually add value to their places. I have no interest in this project. Somebody else is developing it, but the long, as a longtime Realtor and developer, the addition of a convenience store will add, add value and add assessment, not liabilities to the neighborhood. So, with that...
Thank you, Mr. Dutcher. We still have folks, come on up, please.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Teresa Martin. I live at 4107 Stewart Lane, and I want to address the construction of the, oh, Quick Trip. Okay. So, Cedar Falls does pride itself on being a Blue Zone community, as some people have talked about, and many of us are striving to be healthy and productive citizens and good stewards of the environment as well. But it seems a little counterproductive, and to be honest, I think it's pretty disingenuous regarding these goals of being goals that we have as a community, to be good stewards when we're talking about adding another gas station within six, you know, points, I think it's like .6 miles from where we already have the new Casey's. Simply put, I don't know that we need two gas stations so close together. In fact, do I want it to be somewhere else in Cedar Falls? Not in my neighborhood? Not really. I think we have enough gas stations in Cedar Falls. So, I, you know, there are so many things with gas stations that we have to worry about, and we've already talked about some. Different people have talked about, you know, the runoff, the dangers, the dangers of it. And we do need to keep those things in mind. But another thing that not too many people have talked about is that new gas stations should be put in an area where they accommodate, you know, the new store without the chance of putting the other one that's down the road out of business because abandoned gas stations are often difficult to convert to other uses. In the meantime, you know, those gas stations oftentimes deteriorate. They appear rundown. They lower property value because they are not being used, especially in single-family residential property areas. And this impact is called blighting, and this failed use of commercial endeavors are frequently poorly maintained, making them unattractive and unpleasant, not to mention the concern of abandoned underground storage tanks, which are also, you know, something that we need to question whether or not, if these two stores, you know, can both succeed in that And underground storage tanks, you know, gasoline storage tanks can be a problem. Across the US, the EPA estimates there are 550,000 underground gasoline storage tanks, and there are big concerns about soil and water and underground groundwater and leakage and all those types of things that we've talked about over and over again. So, in my mind, we should not add one more storage tank to that $550,000, $550,000 number if we can help it. And we can help it by not approving this gas station. So, I just would encourage everyone to be proactive and thoughtful regarding all the types of building projects that we have, and I do appreciate that most of you who have served before and are new in serving are very thoughtful in your, in your decision-making. But in the area on Green Hill Road where this proposal for this Quick Trip is going to go in, the doctor's offices and the buildings there really do convey a tasteful architecture, and they don't really seem to devalue the residential area. So, I think it'd be kind of sad to turn this area into a drag strip, kind of a drag strip for fast gas and fast food. So, I would ask that you vote no for that Quick Trip. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Someone else up the middle here, if you don't mind, will keep them coming? Come on up, sir. I won't forget about you.
My name is Jerry Dixon. I live at 218 Spruce Hills Drive. I hope all the good points haven't been made, so we'll give it a try here and see what happens. In regard to the decision to bring this matter back to the table, I'd like to make three points. First, a point, and then basically my own comment. Without giving names, one councilman wanted the matter brought back because he questioned the amount of traffic currently on Green Hill Road. He made a personal traffic study and found it to be satisfactory as far as he was concerned. My comment to that is, the focus should not be what the level is now, but rather what it most likely would be if Quick Star was allowed to build. At the current traffic level, the road already indicates vehicles traveling at speeds over the limit, accidents up and down the entire stretch of Green Hill, and areas needing repairs. Increases in traffic will only magnify these concerns. Spruce Hills Drive would also become a 24/7 bypass for those wanting to avoid the heavy traffic of Green Hill Road. And I know that would happen because it happens on Green Hill for people avoiding University Avenue. The second one, council member wanted the matter brought back and indicated he had observed very expensive homes in Chicago that were located close to similar businesses such as Quick Star and wanted to explore alternatives to Quick Star's project design. My comment to that is, that situation does exist in areas in Chicago and around Chicago. However, we need to realize that there's a huge difference in comparison to how we live and what we are forced to endure when we compare Cedar Falls with Chicago. Land is a very expensive commodity in Chicago, and space to build anything is minimal. Fortunately, we live here in Cedar Falls where we can spread things out, enjoy life, and have a choice on what and where things are built. If we wanted to live as they do in Chicago and be able to reach out a window and touch our neighbors, we would all live there. No one wants to solve a problem by building a tall berm or grove of trees along Green Hill Road to cover up some of the problems Quick Star would cause. My third point, during one meeting with Planning and Zoning Committee, a sketchy report was given concerning sound levels taken at Quick Star in a Wisconsin store and the fact they were within guidelines. My comment to that is, my experience with sound testing involved 41 years of employment with Viking Pump, of which 23 years was spent in the engineering lab taking and supplying detailed sound reports to customers, both domestic and international. Valid sound readings are only such if they are taken at the exact location in question. Many factors can and do alter sound readings. Examples of those can include graphical location, presence of surrounding buildings and their structure, time of the year, humidity, land terrain, types of foliage, and number of trees. There was no report given at the time on conditions under which the sound test provided by Quick Star was performed. Examples of those conditions may include: type of sound meter used, calibration of meter to prove accuracy, had the meter been recently calibrated to ANSI standards, that's American National Standards Institute, distance of sound readings were taken from the noise source, typical industry standards require sound readings taken at three locations from the noise source, top, front, and side, and at a distance of one meter from the noise source. What frequency were the sound readings taken at? What type of reading was taken? A-weighted, flat-weighted? What was the octave band used in the test provided? Typical full-band testing requires readings at frequencies starting at 31.5 Hz through 16,000 Hz, and sound levels can be and are different at each frequency. In the case of the Quick Star project, noise may fall under the category of nuisance noise from traffic of cars and semi-trucks, outside intercoms or loud conversations between patrons outside the building late at night disrupting residents' sleep. I think this has been covered, but be reminded that Cedar Falls has a noise ordinance in effect that prohibits excessive noise between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, and this ordinance does not differentiate on how close or how far you are from a neighbor. In this case, Quick Star would classify as our neighbor. In conclusion, I'd like to remind all the council that there was a time when you were campaigning door-to-door and most likely made people promises that you would serve as their voice if elected. Now is your chance to do that by voting no. I was asked why I cared so much about the issue at hand and can only say that I care about my neighborhood, my neighbors personally, and what happens near us. I was told by one of the councilmen that I needed to understand the city, that city progress needs to be an ongoing thing. My response to the council is, is building another gas station the top goal we should have, and is Cedar Falls, is it Cedar Falls' best vision? Is that the best we can come up with?
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Appreciate it.
Is there any time left?
No, you kind of missed the...
Okay.
Sorry about that. And you were going at such great speed, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Thank you. I appreciate the five minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. There's been another, a couple of folks in back here have been standing up, so again, the periphery, I'm not forgetting about you folks there.
Counsel and mayor, thanks for listening to us again tonight. I think I'm going to start off by picking up where Jerry left off about the noise ordinance.
Who are you? Who are you?
Just your name and address, please, Kathy.
Sorry. I thought you all knew me.
Well, we do.
Kathy Barfels, 305 Spruce Hills. I'm going to pick off where my neighbor left off about the noise ordinance. My husband and I went out of town on Friday, and doing so, we stopped at the Quick Star on Ridgeway and 58. And this is what we heard, and I want you guys to all hear it, too, what we all, the neighbors, are going to hear 24/7 against the noise ordinance. That's music playing 24/7. The next thing I heard...
Do we have very many of these audios? Because that's not acceptable. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Do we have any more audios? Because those are not accepted without being approved, nor will we ever accept audios here. I mean, if you have another one because you're moving forward, that's fine, but can we keep them at a minimum, please?
Okay. I'll move forward, and the other one I had of the car wash and stuff to be in here. In other words, we're going to hear this 24/7. Also, for the mixed use, I looked it up on your ordinance, and under 29164... Also for the mixed use, I looked it up on your ordinance and under twenty-nine, one sixty-four C, Commercial, number thirteen, it says examples, and I'm going to read through it because we already did that, that grocery stores, drugstore, restaurant, retail, gasoline stations, bookstores, theaters, household appliances, and et cetera are permissible for this use. Prohibited use is billboard, transmitted stations, communication towers, warehouses, store facilities, industrial use, intensive commercial use such as auto dealerships, lumberyard, sheet miller, plumbing shops, recycling center, and et cetera. If you go to the dictionary, gas station definition is serving motor vehicles with gasoline and oil, also called as a service station. If you go to convenience store, it's a store with extended hours and convenient local stocking, limited range of household goods and groceries. So what QuickStar has proposed is a car wash, fuel with canopy, requested twenty-four hours, gasoline, groceries, bakery, dairy, hot and cold food, beverage, tobacco products, beer, lotto, convenience store merchandise, ice, and propane. It doesn't say that in your ordinance that a convenience store is allowed. It does not say that a car wash is allowed in MU use. So I'm asking you, why is this being considered when your ordinance strictly says not the same? Also, it says billboards. Billboards, if you look at the definition of billboards, it's advertising outdoor uses. Here in QuickStar, they're advertising coffee, so that would be considered a billboard. It says no billboards allowed, so apparently Mr. Lockard's area, there's had the Chronicle Parkway billboard for ten years, has been illegal. So I'm just asking, why are we moving forward when gas station is in the MU's, convenience store, car wash, selling tobacco, lottery, is not? I also had sent in numerous emails on broken window theory. If something is broken, we want to fix it before it starts. And you all have got this email. I'm not going to read through it. But that is total facts of crime runoff from the oil and the gas into our water systems. And I don't know what more evidence we can have when it's white and black and white. I do want to thank our neighborhoods. I have met neighbors over this last few months that I didn't even know exist. That tells you what Cedar Falls is. It's neighborhoods that work together. We're asking you guys to work with us. I don't know what more else to say with all the emails and the people that want it. They're not here. They don't even live here. They don't pay taxes. Their yards don't back up to it. And if they, if, I want a lot of stuff too, but I don't come and say, oh, I want that a mile down the road. Yeah, if you're going to put it a mile down the road, I wouldn't be standing here. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we get some clarification from staff regarding uses in MU, potential uses in MU districts? I believe she was hinting on that.
Sure. David went over the section that quoted where gas stations are noted, so I can read that whole phrase to you if you would like. That's subsection thirteen out of seed that was just referenced. It says, "Commercial uses including retail businesses and personal services establishments shall be permitted as limited herein. Any use generally characterized as neighborhood commercial or commercial uses intended to serve surrounding residential areas. Examples of appropriate uses would include grocery, drugstore, restaurant, retail shops, gasoline station, bookstore, theater, household appliance store, et cetera."
So the intent is that those are examples, not limited to only those per se?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Fairbanks?
Craig Fairbanks, 405 Spruce Hills Drive. I probably have as big a stake in this as anyone. I'm a huge QuickStar user. Somewhere along the line, as much as I spend there, they probably owe me a dividend. But through this process of development along Green Hill Road over the last ten or twelve years, from probably from Mr. Dara's house to where QuickStar is proposing that we build, development after development of this nature has been solely turned down by you, the City Council, or Planning and Zoning. So this was never the intent for this to occupy this type of usage. So today, are we right and they were wrong, or were they right and today we're wrong? I don't have any opposition to QuickStar in a location, but I do have a vested interest in the people that we've built for, who happen to be backed up to that road, who have moved there depending that the same thing was going to continue. Today, we stand where we're, we talk about precedence. We move everything forward on precedence. We have set precedence. We have said, "We don't want this on Green Hill Road," and create more problems like University Avenue. Done a good job of straightening it out, in my opinion. Some people will disagree, but it's a nice structure. One thing that was brought up was the pond release. I directly am impacted by that pond release in a subdivision, a nice residential subdivision, which happens to run to a creek behind your house. The flow out of that pond at this current time is huge. I have asked several times to have it restricted, to do something about it. Today, we're going to pass another development that's going to dump into that pond. What will be done to the people downstream, we're going to be impacted by it. We put in eight hundred linear feet of wetlands, potentially be torn up. Who's going to pay for those expenses? Has anybody even thought about those things? It's not the people across the street, which they have legal grievances, but it's farther downstream than this, much farther. A lot of things have been said about when the property was zoned. When the property was zoned, who was, who were the neighbors? Were there any? Who was notified? I think it's been stated that virtually no one was notified. Sure, we had three council meetings or zoning meetings that passed an entire six hundred and forty acres, which I think that's what a developer should do. But today, we're sitting here looking at it, and we've barely had enough notification on this project until lately to even have an opinion about it. I would ask you guys to think about a project like this and the precedence that's being set. There's six hundred and forty acres to put this thing on. A number of the residents are located closer to it that like to have it than these people are, and they have spent significant amount of money. Their values are impacted. My values impacted. And I would respectfully ask you to consider those items. And if you do move forward, I would ask that you take another look at my flow rate out of that pond that goes on the Green Hill. It's huge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairbanks. Up front, gentlemen, if you want to make your way. Just your name and address, please.
My name is Gary McCormick, and I live at 123 Spruce Hills Drive. I have a question of clarification, and I will ask it in just a second. But if any of you, I'm sure a lot of you have tried to fill a outboard motor gas tank and you spilled the gas and it goes onto the water in the lake or something, and it floats. It doesn't sink, it floats. And you notice how it turns color and everything else because the petroleum is lighter than the water. Now, my point is trying to make is, is when we're talking about runoff in the detention ponds, it doesn't make any difference if the pond is eight feet or ten feet, but whatever runs into it is going to float on top. And that's, if my example is correct, it's going to be the petroleum debris that walk horses off the, from the gas and from the spilled gas and the antifreeze and everything else. And so I understand the explanation that the gentleman at the end said that at some point the detention pond will fill up and fill up, and then pretty soon it'll slowly, as it fills up, it'll runoff. And if the pond is ten feet deep, that's a hundred and twenty inches, the first inch or two that's going to flow out is going to be where all the debris, the petroleum, gas, oil, and everything else is going to be floating. That's the first thing that's going to float out of the detention pond. It's going to flow under the road and it's going to go into that big pond on the other side and then under Green Hill Road and down through, right? And I want you to think about that. I want you to visualize that because that's what happens. If you've ever poured gas on water, it floats on the top. So that's where all the debris from this is going to be, is going to float on the top of the detention pond. Now, my question was a clarification. I believe this gentleman here mentioned something about runoff. Somehow, something was going to be cooled and filtered? And I wondered what, I didn't catch what he was referring to. And if he was referring to runoff, then I guess, how is it going to be filtered? Are there artificial filter?
We'll address your question or do with your comments, if you don't mind.
Okay. That was my comment. I just didn't understand. I need a little clarification on that.
You bet. Thank you.
But that's something to keep in mind. It's going to be the petroleum first that runs.
Sure.
Off the...
Thank you, Gary. Johnny, you have the mic there as far as the gentleman and his previous question with the runoff?
As far as the fuel type spills, I know QuickStar has a mechanism in place, an oil-water separator, that's part of all this, and I can't speak to that in great detail. And when they decide to come up, maybe they can expand on that a little bit.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone further for public comment? Sure, Penny.
Good evening. My name is Penny Pop, and I live at forty-eight oh five South Main Street. There's two things I want to say tonight before I get started. If you could please leave the vote up longer than you usually do, so we all can tally the vote and take a look and hold and see who is, we'd like to hold accountable for this. And secondly, it's been pointed out to us that it's, one of the previous speakers who favors QuickStar is on staff with Lockard Development, and we just wanted to let that be known for transparency reasons. As I speak on behalf of approximately four hundred residents who have signed petitions opposing QuickStar, I would ask that those residents who are here tonight stand with me as we speak to council one last time.
Figuratively, right? Not literally, figuratively.
I don't know. Do you want to sit down with me?
Ms. Pop, you will address the chair, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Figuratively, they can stand with you.
Yes. How about raising their hands?
No, ma'am.
Okay, fine. Since the last council meeting of March fifth, a daily letter on behalf of all the residents has been sent to the mayor and council outlining the QuickStar project and the objections, issues, and concerns that we face. In one collective voice, we are asking the City Council to vote no on the reconsideration of the QuickStar site plan. In September two thousand seventeen, unlimited number of property owners were notified of the QuickStar project. The notification was then expanded due to the interest from the community. As the project progressed from staff to planning and zoning, residents expressed their concerns and issues. Staff did their job. Planning and zoning did their job by making recommendations and alterations to the site plan within their purview. QuickStar first declined to accommodate the city, but in the end conceded some points. The site plan was approved and sent to City Council. After free and open discussions, the QuickStar project was voted down on February nineteenth in a four-three decision. At the next City Council meeting of March fifth, the project resurfaced with a request for reconsideration. A letter from QuickStar was made available to council but not provided to the public prior to the vote. The reconsideration vote passed, and no public comments were allowed. On March sixth, the residents were informed that free and open discussion with their council members were no longer an option due to ex parte communicational guidelines imposed by the city. In other words, the council had been instructed not to discuss any aspect of the QuickStar project with any of the stakeholders. The public was never notified officially. Because of this action, the residents took representation and guidance under Representative Walt Rogers and Senator Jeff Danielson. We are now back before council now, one last time, to discuss this issue, albeit a very limited and restricted one. The council's role is to evaluate the project, look at the big picture, and decide whether it fits into the character of the neighborhood without affecting the health, the safety, or the welfare of the residents. This is not the job of staff. This is not the job of planning and zoning. This is your job. How are you going to make that decision? We know you have reviewed all the information, you've talked to your staff, and you've listened to your constituents, and will make a decision based on the whole. We have taken every opportunity afforded to us to communicate our continuing questions, issues, and concerns. Unfortunately, nearly half of the twenty-six daily letters sent on behalf of the residents opposing QuickStar, as well as other letters of opposition, were not included in the meeting materials posted online. We hope that this oversight will be corrected and the correspondence will become part of the permanent public record.
One minute, Ms. Pop.
You are our elected voice, and through that voice, which is representing our community, we are asking that you affirm the vote taken on February nineteenth and vote no for the QuickStar site plan.
Thank you, Ms. Pop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone further for a public comment? David, do we have representative, do you have a come up, sir, please? Just to get your name and address, please.
Reggie Blanco, 318 Alvarado Avenue, in Cedar Falls. Thank you so much for all what you do for the city, to start with. You have here today and in the last four months how this neighborhood has been bringing to you the information why we don't, or why we oppose this development in this area. One of the beauties of living in this town is that any issue, we are able to come to you and express our opinions. And today, you are seeing a vast majority that oppose to this development. So I hope that you see that in your consideration, in your vote today, that we are telling you that in this neighborhood, is, this side is not welcome. I have noticed in the last four months that there are always questions, and the question seems to fly by the meetings and the conversations and never get addressed. Either for time, either for we'll revise it later, or we'll bring it back, and, you know, sometimes it doesn't get answered. Things like studies, you know, who is providing these studies? If the developer is providing those studies, are they made by three third-party companies? Or is the developer's staff that submit this information? Do you know that information? Is it in your packet? Do you talk to the staff about it? Same with the traffic. I know that the city goes and diligently goes and study the patterns and the previous studies paid by the city. But the developers also submit their own study that you probably compare. So there are a lot of questions. Environmental issues. The staff has their own protocol to follow. If it fits what it is established, okay, it goes. Well, we're better than that. This is Cedar Falls. We like to do a good job. That's where we are where we are. So just because it fit the bill doesn't mean that you guys can push it forward and create a new standard or potential developments in the future. That's up to you guys. That's what we all look up to you and vote for you. That's what makes this town... That's what makes this town great. So as you consider the vote, you know, you have the power to continue our city moving forward, be an example for all the cities in Iowa. So these become the standard in many things in Iowa. Gas stations, there are enough of them. We are a community that takes pride in biking, in walking, in being active. So encourage people to be smart and use the resources that we have. Convenience is great, but also the education of the use of these businesses within our citizens is important. For my kids, for some of the kids that are, in three years, when this development in this area comes up, they can look at the history and say, we were ahead of time. We make this great. For the citizens, in my neighborhood, there is about two kids per household. In four years, all these guys are gonna be driving South Main. And they laugh because it's the truth. What is gonna happen with that road? What is gonna happen for them when they start driving, you know? And they're gonna be like, whoa, you know, there is a lot of traffic here. Please, take into consideration what is the best for the future of Cedar Falls. Just because you wanna be fair to a business doesn't mean that you cannot be even better or fair to the citizens that pay the taxes, that pay with their devotion, with volunteer work, and for buying the properties in different areas, you know, that sustain those businesses. You know? It works all together. So that's my piece. Thank you so much for all what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Blanco. Any further public discussion? Mr. Sturch, do we have a Quickstar rep here?
Yes, I believe there's some reps and some people from Locker, too.
Okay, fine. Sure, come on up, sir. Give him your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Mike Shoppe. My address is one-twenty-six South Main Street, Oswego, Illinois. That's an odd address. We've come a long way. We're the planning consultants that have been working with Oster Development and the Lockhart Group over the last four years. We're involved in the developing of the master plan and the design guidelines that are used to review the development proposals. And we're here tonight to talk a little bit about the background of the master plan, but more specifically, how the topic of tonight, Quickstar, folds into that master plan and to the design guidelines, as well as some of the other aspects of the plan review that we've seen. Our firm is Shoppe Design Associates. We've been in business, I've been doing this work for thirty years. We do both private land development planning, as well as planning review for municipal consultants. And over that career, we've had the opportunity to be involved with the design and review of over two hundred similar types of developments. And the things that I can tell you, the things that I hear tonight from the residents and from the council are very similar, as you might expect. Land development is pretty similar across the country. Most of our work is in the northeastern Illinois area, on the outside collar counties, where there is a lot of cornfields, a lot of sprawling development. That's where the majority of our work is. But we do get involved in other areas around the country, and we are able to see the issues of traffic. Nine out of ten times, traffic is number one issue of the concerns of the community. Number two, in my opinion, number two would be water and drainage. Those two are neck and neck as to what the largest concerns are that we hear as we go about this type of work. After that, we have the issues of landscaping and sound and architecture and things such as that, all the things that you're dealing with here tonight. The master plan, as we put that together to kind of add to David's comments earlier at the beginning of the meeting, the goal of the master plan was to update it. It had been created in two thousand and four. There had been some development, and of course, market, the markets has changed, had changed since it was originally approved in two thousand and four. We were starting to see an increase in development, but the master plan had to be updated so that we had a cohesive plan that we could use to make good, solid decisions on. When a developer came, a user came forward, how much land should we carve out for that? Where would that driveway or that street access be? What's the logical extension of the road that would need to be made? Those are some of the questions that weren't able to be answered without having an updated master plan, because we had had some good success in the overall development up to that point. The best plan certainly serves as a guide. We have a lot of land out there, a lot of land yet to be developed. And it's in our best interest to see to it that we maintain the quality and the values for those that have decided to live in Pinnacle Prairie, who have invested in Pinnacle Prairie and have decided to work in Pinnacle Prairie. So as we, in addition to the master plan that we put together and the design guidelines, we're also involved now in the review subsequent to two thousand and fourteen. All the developments that come forward will be forwarded to our office, and we review those against the master plan and the design guidelines. And there are specific criteria in there that we review them against, and we provide comments to the Locker Development that then get forwarded on to the development. We don't go into the level of review that the staff does. I can see that they go into much more detail than we do. They have many more codes and ordinances that they need to review a development proposal against. I will say this, I think you are poised very well with the staff that you have and the ordinances that you have in place to protect yourselves and the community and our investments for any type of inappropriate things or influences that would negatively affect a neighborhood or our development. I'm impressed with the issue of the sound. We've reviewed a lot of developments. Very rarely do we see sound being brought up to this level of detail, looking at the decibels, although there's very common to have the standards in place. But to see to it that they are scrutinized as part of the development approval process, we don't commonly see that.
Mr. Shoppe, I do not mean to be rude, sir. The five minutes I try to really adhere to, so...
Did I miss the yellow?
Well, it's about ready to come up. Just if you can be succinct, because I also believe that council desired to ask some specific questions in relation to what David presented earlier.
Okay.
So if I could, we'll go the five minutes, which you have two left of on the overview. And if we can just get pointed answers to some of these questions, I think it'll be fair to all concerned.
Very good. I will do that.
Thank you very much.
I did wanna mention that I think the, I've looked at the staff reports. I think the key component that I wanted to throw out tonight that I haven't heard come up is, this is a land use that if it were unregulated in the city, could create problems for us. Again, we have a lot of investment at stake here that we need to make sure maintains its value, as well as the neighborhood. But the fact is, you do have the ordinances, you have the proper ordinances in place, and they're reviewed against those, to help ensure that the light levels, for example, stay as what they are stated in that photometric plan that's in the packet. Of course, your technical staff has the opportunity to review those and provide comment to you. The stormwater plan, the release rate, and the noise, and the landscaping, should those things at some point in time in the future not adhere to the standards that are in the plans that have been submitted or the ordinance that you have? You have the mechanism to correct that situation. And we appreciate that as a landowner and someone who has a lot of land to develop. And I'm sure the residents can appreciate that as well. That's what helps ensure that land uses such as this can fit into a neighborhood. I believe that through the planes that we reviewed, that the Quickstar project fits well into the master plan of Pinnacle Prairie. I also believe that it fits well into the neighborhood. Given the fact that you do have the ordinances and standards in place currently, and you have the staff available to administer those standards, that's the protection that you have, and that's the protection that you need. Zoning is, we do have zoning. We know that changes is hard, but you do have the right tools in place to guide that. And we look forward to hopefully having Quickstar being another member of Pinnacle Prairie.
Thank you very much. I will take the liberty at this point in time, I know Mr. Wieland had two quick questions from the early presentation towards the speaker volume and the trees.
Yeah.
Was that to be?
Your memo on the second of March, number three, you've already agreed to put in five-to-eight-foot trees.
Okay.
I'm more concerned about having eight foot, because the people who are really affected, and you recognize that in this memo, are the ones straight across. Are you willing to cross off the eight, go with the ten-foot trees?
If I could. I'm here tonight representing Oster Development, where, again, the planning consultants. We do have folks that are here from Quickstar, that I think that question, I think you wanna hear that answer from them.
It would indeed. I apologize. I didn't know.
Thank you. Yes, I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Shoppe.
Good evening. My name is Leah Berlin. I represent QuickTrip, sixteen-twenty-six Oak Street, La Crosse, Wisconsin. Mayor Brown and council members, we appreciate the opportunity to come back and potentially clarify some of the questions that you had, and hopefully provide some additional information that might be helpful. If I could, I just wanna go through a couple of the questions and comments that came up, and then if we have additional questions, I could hopefully answer most of those for you also. In regards to the loudspeakers, what they saw in the other Cedar Falls store is the overhead speakers, which we actually don't install anymore. We've gone to the at-dispenser speakers. So if you've seen the newer ones, it's a little TV that's a personal speaker to that, and we can call directly to that pump. So that's how all the new ones are done. Sometimes we do have a speaker in case of an emergency or something like that, but in this case, if we wanted to completely eliminate that, we could.
Excuse me, is that just for then communication back and forth, they're not playing music on it?
It actually, it's actually called, I think, Gas TV or something like that. It's a little screen. It does play the weather, current news events, things like that on it while you're pumping, but it's fairly quiet. It's meant to be heard just to the person standing next to the pump as they pump the gas.
Okay, but my question had to do with neighbors that are closest. And my question was, you've already recognized that your car wash would make a lot of noise, so you cut it down early in the morning and late at night. You really need to have those on during those time periods?
I mean, I suppose we could...
That's a disruption to the neighbors who are living close, and there are just a few of them.
So we could look at that. I guess I would ask that we allow them to be on, and if they are too loud, which I'm fairly certain they won't be, because they are actually very quiet. If you're pumping at one pump, you cannot hear the adjacent pump speaker, the little TV sound. So I would ask that we be allowed to have them, and if they are a problem, as a condition, we would have to turn them off at a certain time of night.
Would you modify your letter to make that statement?
I certainly can, yep.
Okay, thank you.
And then, secondly, hours of the car wash. I think the discussion was to move them from six to ten PM to seven to ten PM. Quickstar doesn't have a problem doing that. Tree heights, I've heard a couple different sizes. If we wanna go to ten feet, we're fine with that. Once we start getting past that eight-foot height, they become somewhat difficult to keep alive. So there'll probably be quite a few transplants to, once we get to a certain height. They're just more difficult because of...
But the key to that is, these few homes that have the most effect on both sight and sound, when I sit there in a park bench and look over that, ten-foot would make a difference, because you're making that tall in two or three years rather than eight or ten with an eight-foot tree.
Yep, and we could...
Are you willing to modify to take the...
Yep, we're willing to do that. And if there's, you know, if there's another place that we would wanna see trees, perhaps along the trail, which would be in the city's right-of-way, city would have to approve that. I mean, we could add some additional trees also. We're not opposed to that in any way.
Thank you.
The truck parking overnight, this site was never intended to accommodate truck parking, and I think by truck parking, we're talking about semi-tractor trailer parking. The site's not designed to really accommodate large trucks. We don't have diesel that would fuel large trucks. The diesel that is on-site is meant for smaller vehicles. It's a smaller pump. It's not a high-flow nozzle. So that's typically what's used on a larger truck. Even dump trucks will accommodate the large-flow diesel. That's not what we have at this site. We can certainly put signs up to say, no overnight parking, no truck parking. We don't anticipate, just because of the difficulty of getting in and out of the site, that that's gonna be an issue. And then I think that the next question probably went to the stormwater detention and the runoff. So our civil engineers have worked quite diligently with the city staff to come up with the current plan. I know that we've started to move the pond into the right-of-way, worked with city staff to enlarge that, so it accommodates all three lots. All that stormwater is all being funneled through that pond. That pond is actually what's called a dry pond, so there will not be a permanent pool in there. So what happens, the stormwater runs off the Quickstar site, goes through a series of catch basins, gets to our oil-water separator. So there's basically a hood system and a downward pipe. So as the water rises, just as the gentleman said earlier, petroleum floats. So that, hopefully, will catch small amounts of petroleum products that come off, and that's then created in this sump. So the hope is that that ideally doesn't get to the pond in the first place. Now, as I said, this is a shared pond, so there is a potential that something from Fairway could come off, something from one of the other lots could get into this pond. So in that, then there's another structure in the outflow structure that the engineer was speaking of, that then we would then create another area where it's sumped, so that as petroleum floats, it doesn't, it's not being skimmed off of the surface. The water is being, coming out from floor below. The other thing, so, since this is a dry pond, the cooling and the filtration is really being created as it runs through the bottom of the pond. Part of that is just in the base of the pond and the soil and the vegetation on the bottom. I believe it should, on the tenure event, I believe we'll see water for about ten hours in that pond is how long it'll be, but then it should drain out. I think, I guess that's kind of the sum of how it works, so...
That's all I had, council, is Ms. Bertrand is up here. Is there anything further to bar?
I understood from the beginning that, the comments, that there was only one sound test done. Can you say, was there more than one done, and why was it done in Wisconsin instead of maybe right at the QuickTrip or Quickstar on Ridgeway?
So we've done numerous tests over the years at multiple locations. We did this one specifically, we were kind of constrained for time. When it was requested, we didn't have time, you know, we didn't have weeks to get it completed. So it was easier for us to do it at a local store that had just been done, that in our minds simulated the openness of this location. It also was the newest equipment, so it'd simulate the exact equipment that was there, so we weren't having a differentiation of equipment. It was also done with a similar road nearby. So we tried to simulate the exact, you're never gonna be exact, but tried to get as close as we could to this location.
So it was just done once, though, at that location? It wasn't done in different weather or windy conditions or...
It was done on one day.
One day?
Correct. Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Bertrand. Appreciate that. Still open, pardon me?
Any other questions?
I don't think so. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Still open to further public comment?
Mayor and council, my name's Nino Costarella. I live at four-oh-one Heritage Road. I would just like you folks to look at this. This is the newest Quickstar that was built right on Greensboro and Highway twenty. And I know that they are talking about changing the roofline, changing the canopy, changing lighting. None of that matters. Would you want this in your backyard? Would you want this five hundred yards from your own home? Can any one of you tell me that you would really want this within even a block of your house? We bought our homes. We built our homes with the promise that this land was being used properly and developed properly with good judgment. And that, you know, four hundred people sent you signed petitions really means something. You know, this area we call home. It's our neighborhood. It is a clean area. Our homes are pretty well-kept up. We have very low crime here. It's quiet, it's safe, a healthy place to live and raise our families. We have great schools, great places of worship. We can get fuel, shopping, and any services we want, three to five minutes to the north, three to five minutes to the south, two minutes over to the new Casey's. Those areas are highly congested areas on commercial, they're commercial areas. They're meant for gas stations. They're meant for convenience marts. They are the areas on University Avenue and... They are the areas on University Avenue and Green Hill Road. You know, we bought and built our homes because this area was thoughtfully laid out, residential, professional area. And the heavily congested commercial areas are just far enough away, so we do not get the traffic. We do not get the noise. We do not get the light, the crime, and the congestion. We do not even see or hear any of these congested areas. They're removed from us, and that's the way it should be. All of the homes that are being built to the east of us, those people don't want congestion. They wouldn't want this gas station, convenience mart, right there by Candillo Church. If your home was across from this, or if you were looking to buy a home, would you buy a home? You have to ask yourself what you're doing to us as residents. You know, we elected you guys. We're counting on you now to just say no to this. There's plenty of other places QuickStar can develop. There's plenty of other businesses the developer can put into that spot. A hair salon, a sandwich shop, anything would fit that area better than a gas station quick mart. We don't need this. Please, look at this, think about this, what you're going to do if you pass this through to these residents. This is not a fair decision. According to your mission statement, you guys promised to take care of the environmental and the integrity of the land and the quality of the development in Cedar Falls. We're asking you to not do this. We're asking you to vote no at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costarella. Anyone further who hasn't been up? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Lynn Barnes, 118 Cordoba Avenue, Cedar Falls. Well, before you call a baby ugly, you better know who it belongs to. And it's our baby, and we ask that you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. I will now cut off public comment, open it back up to council. Mr. Green?
So I've spent the last few weeks studying our zoning ordinances, and I can appreciate why we have some of our controversy tonight. The mixed-use residential ordinance permits gas stations in the MU district. But reading further, the code also states that commercial uses are allowed if, if they can be generally characterized as neighborhood commercial or if they're intended to serve the surrounding residential areas. I interpret this to mean that a gas station should not be so large that it's intended to serve more than just the surrounding residential areas. As a case in point, the music station on First Street and the new Love Travel Center in Waterloo operate at entirely different scales. Although they're both gas stations, the music station is appropriate for an area-zoned neighborhood commercial, but the Love's Travel Center isn't. So in considering site plans, the scale of a use, to me, is just as important as the use itself. Our zoning rules don't spell out what factors determine the scale, so it's up to city council to make that determination. I believe that for any site plan, it's appropriate to consider the size of the building, the types of products and services, the parking considerations, and in the case of gas stations, the number of vehicles that can be fueled and the hours of operation. To gain a better perspective for gas station sizes, I created a comparison chart, and we may have that available to show. Okay, the, it's tiny up on that screen. I'll, I'll give you a tableau, a view of it. At the far left of the site, of the page, I'm a web developer, so at the far left of this page, the stations in the C1 neighborhood commercial zone can fuel four vehicles. The stations at the far right can fuel up to 20 vehicles. So five times as many as in the neighborhood commerce, as the neighborhood commercial stations. Three of the largest stations, all QuickStars, are located in the Highway 1, Commercial Retail, and Business Park districts. None are adjacent to residential areas, and none are in the MU or C1 neighborhood commercial zones. The site plan we're considering tonight is also at the far right, highlighted in yellow. This proposal is a 20-car operation, open 24 hours with a two-stall car wash. This proposal is very different from the gas station's zoned neighborhood commercial. It's twice the size of the new Casey's on Green Hill Road, which is the only other gas station in an MU district. And you can see it very tiny, the Casey's, as the 10-car, the lone 10-car item. And the Casey's is closed from 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. Like one of the speakers noted in public comment, I also see 24-hour operation as an aspect of scale because it increases the availability of services and expands the number and types of customers served. By operating around the clock, would this QuickStar be appropriately limited in scale to meet the needs of the surrounding residential areas? Experience tells me, as do the letters of you residents, that the neighborhoods surrounding this site go dark overnight, and there's very little activity or traffic after 11:00 p.m., and there's no 24-hour businesses nearby. We've seen opposition to this project from the surrounding residential areas in the form of emails, public comment, and a petition. Many of these concerns, as I see it, relate to the project's scale, including the hours of operation. I respect that the MU district allows gas stations, but based on the language of the code, this site plan is not scaled to meet the letter and the intent of our mixed-use residential zoning ordinance and should be turned down.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone else from council?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
Thank you. I appreciate everybody coming tonight. This is a very controversial issue. We represent, two council represent 40,000 people in the city. And when there is an issue, the council chambers are usually filled with one side, and I can give you four or five examples of major projects where this was filled. The number of people who are in this, representing fours, about a third for, two-thirds against. But it's only about half a percent of the people that the council at large represents. The ordinance that we have defines this QuickStar project as being a residential desirable feature in an MU district. The concern I've had, and the major concerns, are the people close by. Most of the residential people that are here speaking can't see it, they don't hear it, they're far enough away. But the people on the north side do hear it, and they do see it. And I've asked those people, on their behalf, I've asked QuickStar, are you willing to make changes to adapt it? Because even though the MU use doesn't define, characterize the neighborhood, it does talk about working with the people to get resolution to issues that come up. P&amp;Z has done that, and QuickStar went from wanting to do nothing to come in and with initial proposal. By the time I got concerned and decided to bring it back, as I felt all my arguments were one-sided, which they were, QuickStar came back on March 2 with a significantly changed proposal where they were willing to look at these people who are most affected. Tonight, I even challenged that, saying the trees aren't high enough. And they're willing to adapt to that, and they're willing to adapt to this. So I'm sitting here representing the whole city, especially those in the silent majority who expect us to do our job. But what is our job? Our job is to follow the ordinances that we have in place for anybody who comes and develops. Our citizens are the people sitting here tonight. They're also the people who are representing QuickStar. They are also our citizens. They're also our business. So we have before us a proposal based on our ordinances, and most all of the council have been trained by the League of Cities and legal staff, and the first thing they say is the best way to get in trouble and to get your city in liability is not to follow your own ordinances. Question is, have we followed our ordinances? Have we allowed conversation and people to make adjustments? Has that adjustment been enough to take care of the real issues? The real issues are sight and sound. All of the other issues have really been addressed. You had one person come up, I forget his name.
Name's not important.
Brady, who really went over those issues. And he could have talked like a council at large. So this is a difficult decision for me. I know they have a legally proposal based on our ordinances. Question is, have they done enough to satisfy the questions and issues that people have asked? And have all the questions been answered, and do they make sense? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Whelan. Anyone else from council?
As I watch this take place here, I think to myself, if we vote no for this as a council, this really won't be detrimental to anybody except maybe QuickStar. I understand that roughly 50% of their site proposals are declined across the country. So I look at it, if we vote for this, it'll be very detrimental to the people that, can I show this, that dots? Here we have a diagram, whichever direction should be up. We have all these people in the immediate vicinity that strongly say no, again and again and again, and it'll be very detrimental to them. And our job is to protect the citizens. And yes, citywide, 95% of the people won't care that this is located where it is. But we are protecting 300, 400, 500 people in the immediate area, young children that are growing up. So voting no will not be detrimental. There's plenty of gas stations around the area, easily accessible, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Anyone else? Green?
I usually don't keep notes, but this has been, the last couple of months has been frustrating for all of us. So I've written a couple of things down. I'll, I'll try to be as brief as I can. First off, I, I do want to apologize to the residents of Fifth and Second Ward for my lack of response to those emails that you've sent to myself and other council members. It's not my usual approach. I can understand how you feel that the city is indifferent to your perspective and your desires. I don't feel that we, as a city, have communicated adequately, thus leading to your somewhat justifiable distrust of our process. But hopefully, we'll, we'll learn from this, we'll be more open in our communication with stakeholders going forward. But I did want to, so anyway, I, I have been uncomfortable with ex parte, the whole ex parte thing all along. As far as this proposal, I've, I've written down four or five things to try to respond to the 26 reasons to vote no that we've gotten every day for the last two months, thanks to Penny's hard work, so. And I do appreciate your passion for all of this. And it is true that I'm elected to represent my constituents, and I try to do that as best I can. And I know there are 400 signatures on this petition, and many of them, perhaps most, are in my ward. So this is even more difficult for me. But part of my responsibility besides representing you is representing the entire city and thinking in terms of how this community develops. I'm going to jump off here for a second because someone earlier mentioned, several people mentioned how long they've lived in Cedar Falls. And I moved here in 1975 thinking I was going to pass through. I've been here for 43 years, and I'm proud to say that for 36 of those years, I've either been on the Park and Rent Commission, Planning and Zoning, or City Council. And for instance, Highway 58 was mentioned. I was on Planning and Zoning, or Park and Rent Commission when that was being done. And that was very unpopular, and it affected a lot of lives at the time. But 28 years later, it's still not, maybe not the best road in the world, but it's brought a lot to our community, which was the second thing that was brought up, the industrial park. And I'm not sure that the industrial park would be what it is without the decision about 58 and some other risky decisions that our council made years back. Then I was on Planning and Zoning when Green Hill Road was built. And that too is controversial, and I'm proud to say I've been on the city council when University Avenue was reconstructed. I bring that up because all of those decisions are difficult, but the councils at that time made those decisions based upon the charges they were given to interpret the ordinances and the guidelines of the city, whether they are misguided or not. Those decisions are made, and ultimately, I believe our city is better for it. And, and I will use a couple of the, the points that were brought up. Green Hill Road has at least for 25 years been a four-lane, 45 mile an hour collector's street. It separates residential areas on the north. All, all the, everything on the north side up to Main Street, up to 58, is residential. Everything on the south side is mixed-use. Green Hill separates those two uses. And I realize when, I live on Green Hill, I back up to Green Hill, and I realize that other things could be on the other side of that street. And I know you don't buy a home thinking what's going to happen over there, but just because there is a nice billboard that had a dentist's office on it doesn't mean that that's what was going to happen, and there are other appropriate uses for that. As far, one of the, one of the big questions that we were supposed to think about every day was the intersection of Green Hill and Main. And yes, it's not perfect. In a perfect world, there'd already be a roundabout there, everybody. And I don't mean, I'm sorry, I don't mean to make light of it, but our, our infrastructure, our, our city is, is developed on our infrastructure, our street, the way we build streets and the way we plan streets is how we plan the city. And again, I think Green Hill was to separate traditional neighborhoods from other kinds of development. And even though QuickStar isn't the one everybody wanted, it's, it's, it's appropriate. And if we start saying to every developer that comes here, well, we don't like that because it's one reason or another, pretty soon developers are going to stop coming here. And that's part, I know, but that's part of our job. And to reflect on what's happened in the past, I think uncomfortable decisions have been made, and everybody here tonight says Cedar Falls is a great town. We maybe make mistakes along the way, but I don't think this is necessarily one of them. So I've, my phone's gone off, so I'll stop rambling. But there was some other pretty important thing I wanted to say. But anyway, I do thank all of you, and I hope that we can move forward from here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Darrow.
Ms. Mary?
Yes.
I just want to thank everyone, both for and against, for coming tonight and speaking. I think that the best decisions are made by actually listening to the people. And Rosemary, where are you over there? You're right, the citizens are our business, and thank you for reminding us of that.
There you go. Mr. Miller?
I, I agree. Thank you all for being a part of this, both the first time around and the second. I know that's caused some frustration for folks, but I just wanted to remind you that that's part of the process too, is that Mr. Green and Mr. Whelan, it was fully within their roles on the council to bring this back up for reconsideration. And as frustrating as that is sometimes, it's part of the process. I, I can understand all of the concerns with this. The thing I've struggled with, much to Frank's point, is that we've got a four-lane road separating the neighborhoods here, and we, residential keeps being brought up. This is residential, this is residential, this is residential, and I've struggled with that in that that four-lane roadway, that's 45 miles an hour. I continue to hear about struggles with people getting across that roadway where their speed's too much. And to me, that is a big barrier to a mixed-use versus a residential. And I've struggled to get by that throughout the conversation. We, there's been a fair amount of criticism coming back to us, and I guess for everybody along the way, the pockets of my jeans are not lined with money. There is not a whole lot of dollars flowing out of them. I don't think there's conspiracies here. I understand people's concerns about ex parte. And I think ultimately, it's to everybody's benefit out here that we have those guidelines in place. So a big developer isn't coming in bending anybody's ear up here on the council without you folks having the opportunity to bend it the same. So as much as I don't like that as well, I do respect it in that there's. So as much as I don't like that as well, I do respect it, in that there's intent for everybody here in that guideline. So I think the majority of the council shares my frustration in that, in that we can't do what we feel is our job communicating with you folks throughout a process, until we're in an open forum like this, so. You know, I, I'll go all day long arguing about the environment and for the environment in regards to this location, but taking that a step farther, until we, as a community, are willing to stop driving vehicles that use gasoline, the argument about the environment, I think, is kind of no in this point, other than we don't like it right here, because every one of us is jumping in that car every day, driving a vehicle to wherever we have to go, it's a necessary evil, I do it every day, as much as I don't like it myself, but until we're willing to take that step, I don't, I think gas stations are inevitable, so. I'm, again, it comes back to the four-lane road separating residential neighborhood, I think, much to Frank's point about Green Hill being designed as a barrier to a certain degree for a traditional neighborhood versus a mixed use, and I think mixed use is something that we look for in other neighborhoods, it was part of the College Hill conversation, allowing convenience to be right here where the homes are, and I know nobody likes a gas station, but I struggle, too, with picking and choosing the winners, when these companies are coming to us, following our guidelines, following our ordinances, and we're starting to pick and choose who wins and who doesn't. So if we need to do something different, then let's look at the zoning ordinances and make sure then that fits with what everybody wants next to their homes, but otherwise, I think it's going too far to start telling people that they can develop here or they can't, so.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, Mr. Blauffer?
I would concur with Councilman Dyer, I've also been frustrated by some of the communication restraints we've had on this process, I know it's not been easy for any of us, nobody up here ran for this office to sit up here and not talk to the residents of Cedar Falls, I can guarantee everyone that, so I agree, that has been very frustrating. To Councilman Miller's point, I think, for me, this comes back to councils prior to this, and a couple of you have been on long enough to remember some of these decisions, where we came up with this process, we agreed, this is how we wanted to make decisions when it came to land use, and it's difficult for me to, as a council, then say to someone, please follow our process, but when you get to the end of following that process, maybe we'll agree with you, and maybe we won't, whether it's a commercial entity, starting a business, or whether it's a consumer building a deck, we have a process, and we need to follow that process, and I don't know how we can justifiably say, thanks for doing everything we ask you to do, but we've decided not today, maybe tomorrow. So I really think, if we trust that process, and if we've decided that's how we want to make decisions, then we need to, to hold firm to that.
Mr. Whelan?
I would like one more comment about ex parte. I was accused in one public memo of being in bed with QuickStar. In order to bring it back, you must have had conversations with them, they must have convinced you to bring them back. And even though all my emails were sent to that person, he's still believing that I had a conversation with QuickStar. It's wonderful that ex parte kept me from even talking to him once. And like I said, I have not talked to anybody on QuickStar, or the representatives from La Carte Realité, on the subject of QuickStar, not one conversation throughout this. I take my credibility, my character, and my ethics very seriously, and I think whoever that is needs to give me an apology, because they know the facts now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whelan.
Thank you for ex parte.
Here you can see no other comments, counsel, this resolution requires a rule call vote, please.
Four voting aye, three voting nay, Mr. Mayor?
That resolution does pass. Moving on to item 5B, is approving?
Mr. Mayor, may I take a five-minute break? We've been going two hours.
Sure, absolutely. We will take a five-minute recess for counsel, Danny.